Of course, it's gonna be the most gorgeous day we've had so far, right? It's down to me. I'd like to welcome you. There's no form required by our bylaws. So we are in business. I want to start by reminding everybody that there are fire exits to my left and my right, and in the back and in the front of all. Of course, there are two fire exits. I'm asking all non-registered... Is this too loud?
Yes.
Maybe. Alright. I'm gonna stand back. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Alright. Are there any non-registered voters of Asheville in this block of seats or that block of seats? If there are, please raise your hand. Okay. By our bylaws, we allow all non-registered voters, non-registered Asheville voters, to sit on the flanks from the far left to the far right of the hall. And based on your assurance that you will not be voting on anything that comes before the House, we welcome you. Do I have your assurance?
Yes.
Do I have your assurance? Oh. There are some voters of Asheville. If you're a voter back in the election, you can do in back seat in one of these two so we can keep track of you. Right? Thank you. Traditionally, what we do is we advance Article One before we do any other of our preliminary matters. We'll just open the polls downstairs so people can start voting. Is there any objection to advancing Article One and voting on it at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion on Article One?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town to choose a moderator and a tree warden, both for one-year terms. A select board member, a board of assessors member, a finance committee member, a school committee member, a board of health members, a constable, a park commissioner, and a sewer commissioner, all for three-year terms. A planning board member and a library trustee for five-year terms. A board of health member for an unexpired term of one year, and a planning board member for an unexpired term of three years. And to vote on the following questions. Valid question one: Shall the town of Asheville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's portions for repair of the Mohawk Trail Regional Middle and High School? Valid question two: Shall the town of Asheville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's portion to purchase a school bus to be used district-wide? Valid question three: Shall the town of Asheville be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's portion for repair work to Sanderson Academy? Polls to be closed at 6:00 P.M.
He don't need no stick and microphone. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on opening the polls? As we speak, if we, the first time we speak, identify ourselves in our room.
Dr. Francis, Mr. Joyce, Mr. Alexander. At what point do we get to hear the recommendations and discussions of the town members before we vote on these ballot questions?
Those, there are articles, anybody?
There are articles later.
There are articles later, at which time we would have, for discussion, what those ballot questions are and what the consequences of voting on them. The polls are open now. They're downstairs. We're voting in the ballot. Up here, we have to approve it if it's going to pass on the floor. Good question. Any other questions? Discussion? Any votes? All in favor of Article One, opening the polls, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Pass unanimously. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the town clerk, Nancy Dunn, to please read the return of the warrant.
To be of the constables of the town of Asheville, in county and flag, with you, in the name of the county of Asheville, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town. While we fight to vote in elections in the town, we are to leave the town hall in said Asheville on Saturday, Saturday, May 18th, at 10:00 P.M. in the morning, again, in their absence, on the Capitol. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up the test of cotton, see her off, at the Asheville Town Hall, in the Asheville Council, in said town, seven days to this time of voting, next evening. Here are Phil Naughton, making the turn of this warrant, to give him here on the town clerk, at times, things, with me, as for state. Given this day, under our hands, the fourth of April, the year of our own, in said fifteen, signed by the Asheville Select Board, Tom Carter, Ron Holder, Todd Alvin, a true copy, attached by our constable, Tom Val, posted eight days before today, with the meeting, as for record. Since within the warrant, I've notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Asheville by posting up the test of cotton, to say, with the Asheville Town Hall and the Asheville Council. They've been, they've been, they've been, they've been.
Thank you. It's, uh, it took me nine minutes and I made my first mistake. I forgot to ask the Constable Betty Lejour whether or not she inspected the ballot box. Have you, Constable Lejour, inspected the ballot box?
Yes, I have, Mr. Moderator. I completely restored the early shining. It's an empty ballot box, so of course.
Okay, it's empty.
Yes.
It is empty. Thank you. I apologize for that omission. I had it highlighted here. I'd like to ask the people at the front table to identify themselves and their position. Mr. Moderator.
And John Carter.
And given executive administrator.
Todd Allen, select board member.
Tom Carter, select board member.
Ron Holder, select board member.
Ted Murray, finance committee member.
Tom Strager, finance committee member.
Janie Rogers, finance committee member.
Richard Carroll, finance committee member.
And I'd like to point out the finance committee member, David Noel, could not be with us here today, thanks to all of you who made today possible with the front table panding. I'd like to identify the tellers. Should we need them? Should we need a count today? Fay Whitney, Nina Culler, Sandy Lilly, Caroline Murray, Ben Stewart, Jane Shane, David Norton.
Yes.
All of the board members, thank you for your service, for your patient service. At this time, as is our tradition, I ask all of you members, the members who are family and our friends and our neighbors who have passed since our last annual town meeting, if you can stand, please do so as I read them in. George F. Bigford, Claire L. Pless, Frederick H. Graves, Jr., Robert Rangel Collard, Robert E. Jean Moore, Jr., Louis J. Poisant, Evelyn A. Roberts, Ruth J. Craft, Norma L. Harris, Richard E. Noor, Sr., Arlene Mae DeLuca, Lorraine B. Dyer, Shirley Roman, Eric Gilchrist, Barbara Jean Zalinski, Paul Charles Mallett, Juniper Johnson, Nordal F. Arbison, Norbert J. Tetrow, William G. Eddy, Eunice Bolaski. Can we please have a moment of silence and remember our family, friends, and neighbors? And thirteen, I was just pointing out my name said Louis as opposed to Louise Poisant. I apologize. As required by our bylaws, since May of 1849, I will now read the bylaws relating to the current annual town meeting. All persons present at any town meeting shall, while the meeting is open, be seated when requested by the presiding officer, if there be sufficient seats therefor. If not, they shall stand at the west end of the hall. When anyone addresses the chair, he shall rise and stand uncovered during his speaking. No one shall stand in front of the chair, where the moderators stand. When votes are being counted or given in, except they are called upon to do so by the chair. There shall be no talking about the House while business is being done, and all shall keep silence at the request of the chair. No one shall speak on the same question, whether twice, without either the meeting, or to explain, or to call to order. No one shall interrupt another while speaking, except to call him to order. When several motions are made in regards to the same subject, related to the sums of money, numbers, or time, the question shall be first put upon the largest sum or number and the longest time. In all other cases known, a motion shall be made while one is pending, except as an amendment, or to commit, or to adjourn. When a vote decided by the moderator is questioned, it shall be made certain by persons on either side, rising and standing in their places, uncovered till counted by the moderator or the tellers appointed by him. The reports of all committees related to money or property shall be in writing. All motions and amendments shall be in writing, when required by the chair or by any person. No person shall be allowed to vote to move the reconsideration of any vote unless he has voted in the majority or not voted at all. No peddling or smoking shall be allowed in the hall during the meeting. This code of bylaw shall be granted by the presiding officer or town clerk at each annual meeting. The warrant this year contains thirty articles, and we want every voter to know what he or she is going to have to vote on. Rather than reading each article as it appeared in the warrant in the original call by me to that article, we've learned that by dispensing with the complete preliminary reading and instead just referring to the article number, we save time for a discussion. This makes sense since meeting members have been provided copies of the warrant so they can see what each article or text to. Does any member of this meeting object to waiving reading by me of the posted article and then looking at the actual motion? Anybody object? That's what we'll do. I think we're ready to go. Okay. Article two. Do I hear a motion? Some votes. There's a motion to, for the town to act on the reports of the town officers. Is that what I heard? Is there a second?
Second.
Maybe second. Okay. We have that motion. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, can't, any abstentions? So the act on is to set, right? At this time, we're gonna ask the select board chair to give us an overview of what we're about to act on. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning. Good morning. So today, in these thirty articles, we've got two of them out of the way so far, so we're moving at breakneck speed. But I want to give you an overview of what the budget, what Asheville's budget will be for fiscal year 2016, which starts July 1st of this year. We've got roughly a two and a half, oh, I'm sorry, four and a half million dollar budget. Been a long time since it was two and a half millions. A four and a half million dollar budget. About $240,000 worth of that. We used some free cash that the town had accumulated to pay those expenses. Some of the, some of the highlights this year, first of all, is that we don't have any debt exclusions this year, which has been kind of our habit as we replace equipment at the highway garage or for other uses. We were able to pay for that using some of that $240,000 of free cash. So that was a big thing that we were able to overcome. What that does is that gives us in the future, we're trying to manage our debt and our debt payments out in front of us so we can have somewhat stabilized tax rate as we move through. We're gonna talk a lot today in the budget this morning on the school, and the time we spend on the school is well-deserving, since out of that four and a half million dollar budget, our total education expenses are projected to be $2.6 million to that. So any discussion we have certainly is well worth the time invested. One of the big things this year that we're gonna discuss early on is we're gonna do a little change in here. The select board has moved forward, taking action on a report we hadn't done last fall by the Department of Local Services. They came in to look at how the town operates and our financial situation and so forth, and they did exactly what we were looking for. They came up with some recommendations. And instead of having, their first recommendation was, instead of having a position of an executive administrator, we really needed to return to have a professional town administrator. So the select board picked up that mantle as we've moved forward. We've had a search committee that has advertised and interviewed, and we'll be moving forward on that. But that, that's kind of a big change in the budget, because you'll look down through there and all of a sudden you'll see $60,000 salary position that wasn't there previously. Although we don't have anybody hired yet, we wanted to make sure we had money appropriated. So that, that's one of the bigger changes. Roads and highways, we've got a lot of projects that are, that we're moving forward on, updating the dam and making sure that's safe and maintained well. The retaining wall, which would be on the north side of the Bronson Avenue, we've got some engineering projects, and we're working with the trustees that have title to the athletic fields up there where the old Sanderson was. We're working with them to move that project forward. We have Smith Branch Road, rebuilding that, where we've been able to use, we're moving forward because we have FEMA money, ANEMA money after Irene, and then a grant that we were fortunate to get to update that piece of road. So we've got a lot of projects going on. One of the other big expenses that is in this budget is the transfer station. In the past, I've always been able to get up and talk about how our transfer station expense and how wonderful we do at recycling, and we really do a fantastic job on recycling. But our expenses have been very stable and really haven't moved much in the last decade or more. This year, we have probably a 25% increase in what we're projecting for our expenses to run the transfer station. You know, all good things come to an end, but BP wants us to start actually monitoring the water that's in the monitoring wells. They want us to update and make sure that the place is maintained to a little stricter standard than what we have in the past. And so there's some engineering, of course, that goes into that to modernize. Looking back, over time, we put the transfer station in, and year after year, we operate it and never really thought, gee, you know, at some point we're gonna have to update this equipment, that that, that there are gonna be problems. And we had some of that this year. So this is kind of just the highlights, but we're trying to, to take care of the needs of the town, and I'm sure I'm missing a lot of them that we'll get to discuss later. But I really feel that when we pass this budget, that we're gonna be in a good position. We're gonna have a good balance and stabilization. We'll still have a free cash balance that I don't recall us having in a number of years. And we'll be in a position to take advantage of any opportunities that come up or decisions that, positions we find ourselves in that'll take some money. So, you know, we may not be driving the bus, but we're on the bus. We're not under the bus. We're not dodging the bus. So, but I think we're, we're doing very well, and I'm glad to see you all good.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I'm telling you, you can go to use the microphone. Does anybody, does anybody have any problem hearing me?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So now I'd like to hear from the finance committee chair and the comments you might have illuminating what we're about to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to expand on some of the comments that Tom has made for us this morning, and note that there are actually three questions that will call for a debt exclusion. Those come up in Articles of, I think it's eight, nine, and ten, and they are related to the school system. And so you should understand that we're gonna come to those particular topics shortly. But the important thing is to note that we are not going to be using a debt exclusion for the purpose of buying some equipment this year. For those of you who have picked up a copy of this one-day spreadsheet coming in, I think I can touch upon a few highlights to give you a little bit more understanding of what we're doing financially. This is a single spreadsheet on which we try to look ahead several years to see what the capital needs for the town to likely be, and recognize that as you look at various columns representing years in the future, future fiscal years, a lot of these are just estimates and projections. The one thing that we do know about is that for the fiscal year 16 proposed column, that's the second column we see there, we are identifying the fact that we would like to get a mower and a, a used street sweeper totaling some $75,000. And you're gonna talk, and we'll talk explicitly about that in Article Five in just a moment. But this year, instead of a debt exclusion, we are using the free cash that we have on hand to do that. And just as a reminder, recognize that a debt exclusion allows us as a town to assess taxes for a certain purpose above the amount of its levy or levy ceiling, but only for the period of that borrowing, not permanently. If you wanted to do a permanent override, we would pass what's called a Proposition Two and a Half override, which then permanently increases the tax base in our town. We would live that, with that for years to come. The debt exclusion is only a temporary borrowing that is allowed, and once it's finished up, we go back to the earlier tax rates. And so this year, we're using free cash, but we are, for the purposes of the school-requested financings, we're asking you to authorize a debt exclusion. And you'll see that if you look down here under that obligation section, you'll see there's a high school, middle school maintenance upgrade, and it's proposed for fiscal year 16. And right below that, there's the Sanderson maintenance upgrade, much of which got voted last year, and some additional amount, $100,000 for the boilers and the heat valve, you'll see in the warrant article, are being asked for this year. And what you can see off to the right, for the years fiscal year 17 on out from fiscal year 21, those are the projected amounts that the debt service in our town, Asheville, would have to bear. But effectively, when we're asking you to vote for Articles Eight through Ten, we're simply asking you to authorize the school district to borrow these monies on our behalf. If we do authorize it, the borrowing would be done sometime in this coming fiscal year, but we would not have to start paying our portion of the debt service until fiscal year 17. And that's why those numbers don't begin until that point. Finally, what I'd like to point out is at the very bottom, under the reserve section, focus on the column under fiscal year 16, and you'll see that as of today's annual town meeting, we have left $104,950 in free cash, even though we have spent considerable amount to make this vote, or we're proposing to spend that amount. We have a stabilization fund of some $418,000, which we have not touched since last year, which means that the total reserves, the combination of free cash and stabilization fund, comes to this $523,000 amount. And that, as a percentage of the total budget, the four and a half million dollar budget that Tom referred to, leaves us with about 11 and a half percent reserve to budget ratio. And that, we think, is comfortably within this minimum boundary we set of 10 to 15%. That helps us be prepared for some future contingency where we might have to use some free cash in the coming year, or we might have to actually withdraw something from the stabilization fund. But so far, these are reserves that we feel are well-protected and give us some stability going forward financially. You'll see also that the budget compared to last year increases by $113,000, or about a two and a half, 2.6% increase. So we think that's quite modest, and we think it's a responsible way to plan financially. So that's just a bit of an overview, and it's the activity that we look at in the finance committee to ensure that after all our budgeting, we still have in place adequate reserves for the future, should be needed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Article three, do I hear a motion? Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler. I move the town to set the salary compensation for all elected officials of the town, select board, assessors, board of health, moderator, tree warden, and constable, as provided by MGL Chapter 41, Section 108, to be made effective as of July 1st, 2015, as contained in the budget.
Is there a second? Aye, the second. Mr. Coler, I think, I think.
This is just regular business as we need to require.
Everybody here, Mr. Coler? Okay. Any recommendations in the finance committee?
Now, Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends in favor of this article unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of the town setting the salary compensation for all elected officials? They aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article four.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Allen. I move the town authorize the town treasurer for the approval of the select board to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, in accordance with provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to renew any note or notes as we have given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
What is being asked here, Mr. Allen?
So again, this is general operational business, depending on cash flow and how revenue comes into the town. If there's any ever shortfall on anything to be paid for, the treasurer will borrow money and cover it until revenue comes in. It's just standard business practice.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor?
I'd like to permit the.
Oh, did I ask? It's nine. Sorry, I didn't, I don't care. Any recommendations?
Mr. Moderator. We'd like to unanimously support the area.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thirty-four minutes, and I've made three decisions.
Let's count it.
Let's count it. Now we're ready to vote. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All in favor of article four as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article five, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to some of $75,000 for the purchase of a highway sweeper and mower.
Second. Is there a second? Would you speak a little about this?
Yeah, this is, uh, what, uh, Mr. Murray and I had mentioned in our overview of the budget, uh, trying to keep up with the schedule of updating equipment, uh, as well as we can, uh, the sweeper and the mower were the two, two pieces of equipment that needed to be updated, capital pieces this year. Uh, we've known this has been on the schedule for quite a little while. Uh, actually, the sweeper's probably been put off for a couple of years. Um, and this was, uh, this is a product that, uh, in our discussion that we could, uh, as the budget came together, we could pay for this out of free cash, which is a great thing, just to, to get it and have it paid for and move on. So, uh, that's the background.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there a representation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee recommends unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, sir. Territorial, state overall, do you have any piece of equipment in mind? Do you have lines on them, or are you shopping?
Uh, very good question. Uh, the highway superintendent does have a line of, uh, there are municipalities that turn this equipment in on a way more regular schedule than, uh, than we do, uh, and, and there are some available, or there were a month ago, and there will be in two months from now also. Uh, a good, uh, point is that the highway sweeper that we have now, I think it's the first highway sweeper we ever had. It's a, it's a 1985 model that we purchased used in 2001. So, uh, there's a lot of room for us to update.
Do you wish to add anything, superintendent?
Um, can I answer another question?
Sorry. Tom from side, highway sweeper?
I don't need to add anything. I can just answer some questions.
Uh, Mr. Karamidis just asked, do you have any particular one in mind?
Uh, not a particular one, but there's a few available. City of Boston is supposedly trading in 13 coming up soon, and so we're gonna, it's gonna take some research and shopping around, but, uh, as Mr. Karamidis mentioned, there was one available a month or six weeks ago. Uh, but the salesman I talked to the other day is, is not sure if he can get his hands on it or not, that's down east, but we'll have to do some shopping around and try to come up with the best plan we can. A brand new sweeper costs $192,000, just for your information.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes.
I would just like to ask a question about what portion of the town's required sweeping?
Um, the paved roads, all the hardtop roads. Apparently, there's some interest because since I got to town hall, at about 10 of 10, I've had two people ask me when we're gonna sweep the road.
Here's number three. Uh, Mr. Col.
David Col, Phil Road. My question is, uh, is whether there is some opportunity to, for a economy here where we could be sharing sweepers, because the sweeper is something that we only are using, you know, maybe a few weeks a year, and otherwise it's depreciating. And so I wonder, is that something that we could collaborate with other towns and buy one and share them with Buckland or Plainfield or something like that, and that could save us a lot of money out of it?
Thank you.
Uh, haven't really looked into that. A sweeper, we use, this sweeper that we have now, we average about 115 hours a year. And a couple of things that come to my mind quickly is everyone wants to use a sweeper at the same time of year, in the spring, is when we start. It is used more than just in the spring. We use it for spring cleanup. We use it for preparation of resurfacing roads, and we use it in the fall for some fall cleanup of leaves and that type of thing. An occasional, uh, emergency situation after an automobile accident or something like that. So I, I suppose that's a possibility. I think the maintenance issues on a sweeper would be, the agreement could be a little difficult to work out. Sweepers are a little higher maintenance machines than some because they're working in dust and grit all the time. So, uh, I'm not sure how that would work out, but we have not looked into sharing a sweeper.
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, just, just to, um, expand on that a little bit, I, I think it's a great idea if we could share, but comes to my mind, it'd be a lot like sharing a toothbrush, you know, you never get it back the way you left it. I'm quoting you, the chief of. But there are firms, there are firms that you can hire and come in and, and do sweeping for you in the winter, uh, you know, in the spring rather, after winter roads. But, uh, what comes to mind that everybody has to, and to relate to, is that we need a highway sweeper, especially after a winter like this, where we spent this huge, it's already an amount of money on winter roads and spreading all this sand and salt, and now we have the privilege to go pick it all up again, if we can, to get it off the road. So they, they, quite a bit go hand in hand. Uh, and, uh, it's just a cost of doing a business, and if we can get the number of years out of a good sweeper, uh, and, and we can control the maintenance, uh, it's, it's not a bad investment at all. I, I would think it may be as good as that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to, we want to share the question, but it's still before the sweeper. Yes, sir.
Did I understand, Mr. Moderator, oh, we heard, did I understand that we didn't have a sweeper until 2010? Well, we had an old, we had an old tow behind, sweeper that could sweep the stuff off to the side, sweep it into a row and pick it up in a shovel. This is the first, uh, motorized sweeper that actually picks the material off.
And the previous?
I'm sorry.
The previous major was, I suspect?
Correct. Or we would have to hire a sweeper, as Mr. Karamidis said, we can hire a sweeper. The contract that the council government has, the sweeping companies now is for $125 an hour of sweeping. So you can see that hiring a sweeper is quite expensive. We would, it would cost us, at a, our average of 115 hours a year on a sweeper now, at $125, it would cost us, uh, over $14,000 a year if we hired a sweeping dog. So this would be relatively, it's a relatively quick payoff to purchase a sweeper.
Mr. Lloyd.
Ethel Lloyd, Watson's, Chris Corner Road. Switching gears, another item on this article, motor. And I just want to understand, that's articulated arm motor, hydraulic system, you're driving with the same power unit, just replacing the motor head?
Exactly. We just want to replace the, the, the more on the existing tractor.
Okay. If we have an article, question cut it. I'm ready to vote, yes, sir.
Um, Nancy Merrill, Chris Road. Um, I'd just like to say that, um, I, um, do my best to try and save some nickel trees on Chris Road, and I think the salt is very hard on them. I'm hoping that the sweeper somehow, if we are, um, sweeping up all the sand and salt, that we could recycle it and use it next year somehow.
Mr. Boyd, I could be educated on whether it's reusable?
Uh, sand is not reusable because it's pretty much lost all of its grit. So it's, it's not reusable as a winter sand product. Sometimes it'll be used for other things such as fill or...
Anything else? Ready to vote? All those in favor of transferring from free cash to some of $75,000 for the purchase of a sweeper and a mower, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Article six.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move the town raise and appropriate $1,000 to pay for school committee stipends, $66,274 for educational capital expenses, and $490,313 for vocational school expenses, for a total of $557,587.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second. Mr. Coler, any particular thoughts?
Sure. I'll offer a few bullet points worthy of notice. Um, first of all, this is different than the published warrant. The published warrant on this, on the vocational end was, uh, $519,000, so it's a $28,687 difference in the 49313. So that's just worthy of notice. This is down 8.8% from last year. Uh, it's a bit of a moving target. As you all know, we are not a member town to the Smith and Franklin Tech schools, so we get assessed a, a tuition grant on that. Uh, tech-based tuition is $18,400 per student. Um, Smith-based tuition is $17,556 per student, which by the way, is down $714 from last year. Combining those two, the total of Smith and tech tuition estimate, it's just an estimate because we don't know who's gonna lock in tomorrow, and we have to carry enough reserve to pick up one or two tuition rates, is $404,250. And another big item is the, uh, Smith and tech transportation, uh, which we've really done a lot of efficiency with, uh, and that's down to, or that's at $86,630. So, that's all my bullet points right there.
Thank you. Is there a representation of the finance committee?
Um, Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends this unanimously, and I'd just like to add that David, who couldn't be with us today, did a phenomenal amount of work on this article. His recommendations are...
Thank you, Mr. Kara. I would point out that, um, our school superintendent, our school business manager, and of course, our school community members, our president, if there are any questions or comments, questions or comments, discussion. Are we ready to vote? Yes, sir.
Uh, just to say, Mr. Moderator, how many students are rushing this board?
Um, Goodell.
There are 21 from Ashfield. There are eight going with, um, Smith vocational, and 13 are going through the Franklin Tech.
Thank you. Bobby Goodell along with Emily Robertson, representative. Any other questions? Are we ready to vote?
I just wanted to note that we talked, uh, certainly, the finance committee chair spoke
about what our free cash projected was by drilling down, and David Moore did a tremendous amount of work, like Rick said, on drilling this down and changing it from what was posted. It will take our free cash balance from $104,000 to $132,000. So getting these numbers drilled down in a budget and trying to figure out just what our costs are gonna be, uh, now that we have a better student count and so forth, uh, have a positive effect on what the reserves of the town have.
Thank you. Good vision. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the town raising and appropriating $1,000 for school committee stipends, $66,274 for educational capital expenses, and $49313 for vocational school expenses, for a total of $557,587? Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Any abstentions? Article six passes unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Robertson.
I'm Emily Roberts of the school committee, Baptist Corner Road. I move that the town raise and appropriate $2,028,973 for regional educational expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this?
Uh, this is Ashfield's portion of our operating budget.
Mrs. Roberts, you be heard, okay? Okay. Thank you.
This is Ashfield's portion of our operating budget. You publicly picked up a handout, now, before she came out, I think it was the book faculty? The gold copy, sorry. I have, I have a one copy. So as you'll see, um, generally, the school committee tries to keep our budget within a certain amount, and this year, uh, we really felt was a year that we needed to add back a little bit more than we normally do. So our total budget was a 3.6% increase, and if you're paying attention to other towns, um, and other districts, you'll know just that it either was a case of increasing in slash and burn, or keeping it low in slash and burn. So we're really excited to have a few initiatives that we're able to do, including offering free preschool unanimously across the districts, and we have, uh, Chinese programs. There's some other headers in your, in your brochure. Um, as usual, the state determines how much of our prior budget they're gonna chip in. We have, um, year after year, seems to be a little bit less, and the town have to pick up a little bit more and more, so there was an increase, and we have, we had to ask the towns, all of our towns for, that would have probably been 4.7%. But it wasn't until the governor set his project after March 1st that we were able to talk about what each town's individual assessment was. Again, that's not a number that we calculate, it's based on, um, the minimum contribution is based on the state formula. And so Ashfield's here went up 4.6%, a total of $79,153, leading to the amount that we're voting today. And then we have to answer your questions.
Thank you. Finance committee, do you have recommendations?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends unanimously in favor of this article.
Thank you. Discussion?
Nancy Boss, Chris Corner Road. The proposed preschool, I'd be interested in knowing what the real price tag of that is, especially in light of I see you have a very good turnout of 25 students, and I think free pays can't be that big because it's potentially a two-room project, and so I could have a price tag.
Thank you. Would you like, superintendent? Is there a superintendent, much more proud is here, he is not a registered voter in Ashfield. Any objections to him speaking? Thank you. Please.
Good morning, citizens of Ashfield. Good morning, compared to being here today. So Emily's covered a fair amount of this, and Nancy, I'm gonna answer your question. Um, there's, there's some context that I think that we need to pay attention to here.
Could you please give your voice up to those who can?
Yes. So the big picture is, this is my 10th time in front of you. Big picture, what I would say to you is that our schools have never been healthier. Our schools are not, our students have never performed at a higher level. So if you look at all, at all our elementary schools, um, from an MCAS perspective and from a number of other measures, we're really doing well. And your own Lynn Dole, Principal Dole, has been a major player in the transformation that's been happening over several years now. Our high school graduation rate has gone up every year for the past four years, maybe, four to five years. We're a little over 85% and continuing to trend in the right direction. So we're very healthy, and unlike in prior years where we've had a fair amount of contention going back to the... And unlike in prior years where we've had a fair amount of contention going back to the closing school days, this year was particularly forward-thinking. There's been a lot of conversations happening between the school district and the Select Board, Ashfield Select Board Finance Committee, on a number of different levels. And Ron Cole put a ton of time into the long-range planning committee, looking out beyond one year. Enrollment has been one of the major issues that we've been paying attention to. The issue of our buildings being under capacity. Part of the thinking behind a preschool in the budget is to help us address enrollment, to grow enrollment substantially. And that was one of the recommendations that came out of the long-range planning committee. So that's the reason why that's in the budget. And right now, if you look at Sanderson's enrollment, with this budget, we do anticipate 25 kids, Nancy. And we're anticipating, what that would do is move the capacity to be, the number of our vacancy rate, if you will, would shrink. Our occupancy rate would be about 65%, which is really trending strongly in the right direction. It really gets to the underlying issues that we're trying to deal with within the school this year. So I've accepted within the budget, Nancy. We put in $200,000 to cover the added costs for the preschool to make it available across all the towns for half-day, three-hours in the morning. We're still going to offer an afternoon session for those families that would like a full day of preschool, but that'll be a tuition base. I won't know the actuals until we see the kiddos that come in the fall, but we're living within that $200,000. It is entirely plausible that if we have 25 students at Sanderson, we will have two preschools. Needing to add at least two preschool teachers and two paraprofessionals. And depending on the individual IEP needs, the actual staff we will have in that time. But I've committed to the school committee that we'll be, we'll figure it out as we have the last decade with the changes that happen every single year in the budget. Your budget is your plan. The plan is never what actually happens after the fact. But we live within our means.
Mr. Moderator, IEP is, what is IEP?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Uh, Educational Plan. An Individual Education Plan for Students with Special Needs. Students with special needs, depending on what their disability is, require additional services. And oftentimes, those additional services involve staffing.
Thank you.
If I may speak again, I'm wearing the hat of the Chair of the Ashfield Community Preschool. And I had a green handout. If anyone needs it, I have other green handouts. It's, I'm calling it fun fact. And after you go to press, you'll always think of war. Another fun fact is, in a year or so, very soon, we will potentially hit servicing 3,000 students in our community and extended area. Another fun fact is, for years, when kindergarten was half-day, guess where the children went in the afternoon? They came to the Ashfield Community Preschool. So the way it's all been presented in the press is this proposed preschool at Sanderson is slam dunk. And it is, to me, it's not about the children. I obviously want the children of this town taken care of. It's a child-centered community. One way we are a child-centered community is 30 years ago, we started our own preschool. Four of those five moms are still very active members of this community. Needless to say, a preschool that can offer some free care at Sanderson will have a huge impact on the Ashfield Community Preschool. We have some pluses in that we offer a program year-round and offer it all day for working families. The other pluses, and I can be corrected by people from the school committee, I understand that the proposed preschool at Sanderson, the child has to be three-years-old when school starts around Labor Day. If they turn three at Halloween, too bad they have to wait a year. The Ashfield Community Preschool has the flexibility of taking on the children whenever they're ready to attend. Currently, we're licensed by the state to take children as young as two-year, nine months. We've talked for years at the preschool of lowering the age because as new families were moving into the community, it was clear there were more babies, and parents meant, hey, my child's above average. Can you take them to two? And we would love to, but all the children in Ashfield are above average. And the state won't let us. So we are working with the state, and we fully anticipate in the fall that we will be offering a toddler program, which can, which we can take them to two. We actually can take them all the way down to 15 months. So we are reinventing ourselves. I hope we can continue to work with the district in offering some very, very fine after-school care, that the state now calls after-hour care. So, you know, a part of you wants to vote the Mohawk budget down and have them come back with something without a preschool because my allegiance is to the Ashfield Community Preschool. Because this is going to have an impact. We're doing our best to reinvent ourselves. We will be open in the fall. And I hope we can continue to work with the school committee because if they will work with us in helping, letting us and inviting us to provide some of that after-school care, it will ensure our viability. And maybe together we can elaborate to make sure all the children in this town are taken care of.
Thank you, Nancy. Wow, look at all the hands. Would you like to respond? Is this an answer to a question that you raised? Or is this your, you as a citizen, would you?
Well, I think it's important because, you know, we're voting on on the school budget issue. And Nancy came and promoted the Ashfield preschool. And I want to say I'm so happy to hear you do that. You know that I was on the preschool board for many years, and that my passion is for all the children of Ashfield. And we tried so hard to work with you and meeting you for over a year because we never wanted to be in a position of competition. I think the best thing for all of Ashfield is to have a choice. I'm so excited that you're, you know, fighting and that you're providing alternatives. That means a lot. We want to continue working with Ashfield. The issue that Mohawk has is that we have to look at the district and all of our towns and not just one. And it's really imperative at this stage that we have all of our schools on a level playing field. We had a very ad hoc where some kids and some parents were free. Some had free programs, and Ashfield didn't have a program at all. And that's why we felt we had to get everybody in all the schools on the same level. And we definitely want to work with you and have a positive relationship.
Thank you. Of course, we're the only town with above-average kids. Okay, I see so many hands. One, two, three, four, five. All right, um, Elga, Cindy. I'm sorry. There are another hand.
I have another hand.
Okay, in line.
Hi, Cindy Carney, Main Street. I have a couple of concerns about this. Currently, it's my understanding that there are working parents who bring their children to preschool very early in the morning, and then they go to work. If we're going to have these children transported to a public kindergarten, who provides that transportation? At the end of their kindergarten time at the school, can they then be transported back to the preschool for pickup at somewhere between 5:00 and 5:30 by their working parents? Seems like that's a lot of shuffling around for a very young child. Isn't there a way that the public school system can support children who are going to wind up being in our private preschool all during the day? So that they're not being shuffled?
Another question?
So that, my question is, how, you know, have any of the people involved thought of these issues? And how are they going to address them?
Thank you.
Keep looking at her.
Oh, she's looking at you.
So as Anthony mentions, we've been speaking with the preschool. I see Mary's out here now. We've had meetings over the course of the last year and a half. And I'll tell you that we don't have all these details sorted out. What I can tell you is that the school district, from the beginning, has intended to work in a complimentary way with the preschool. It's not our intention for too harm. We understand that this creates a competitive situation. But we are, we are planning to do this in a way where we're doing this together. So as far as, when you brought up those are concerns that we have, we just, we haven't had these discussions yet. But I've said to the principal, Emma Lebovitz, at Sanderson, because she's come to me with these issues. We want to serve our parents. So we want to have a program that's going to work for working parents. And we also need to make sure that it works for young children and their particular issues. So that, I don't know what this is going to look like yet. We're looking at a variety of options, which would include having the Ashfield preschool present inside Sanderson before or after school. We just haven't sorted it out for that level.
Thank you. I think I saw Anna President and that young lady.
Anna President in Southside. I'm not sure who can address or who can answer this question. But to avoid this competitive situation, is there any way that the Ashfield preschool can become the Sanderson preschool? In other words, we've got that facility. It's a fabulous school. I seem to remember about a half a year ago, they put out a plea for funds because they were short. This would supply them funds. My question is, can we take this funding, assuming we vote on it, and use the Ashfield preschool as the Sanderson preschool? Make it one and the same, instead of putting them in competition to each other? Is that clear?
It is. The answer is not. No, this is not, that question required a more complicated answer. What I would, what I'd say to you is, we talked about that as one of our options at the very beginning. And part of the issue that came up from the beginning was the requirements for a special for a public school system versus a private preschool system, especially around special needs students. And there was a grant that was an underlying piece to this, which the district could no longer send money to the Ashfield preschool because of eligibility issues and meeting the requirements as a grant. So I don't think that what you're saying is actually possible. But I'm not ruling out, the whole, I just want to really make it clear here that we see the Ashfield preschool as a partner and an important member of the community. So we're trying to do this in a way that is as friendly as possible. And we have a lot more conversations to have here before we sort this out. I frankly was really happy. I received a message that the Ashfield, because what I thought was Ashfield was simply going to close, which I felt was sad. But then I got a message saying they're going to try and reinvent themselves and focus on daycare, which gave me a sense of, okay, so there's an opportunity here where we might be able to work together and have a future together. But I just don't have, we have not had the detailed conversations that we need to have to start to shape this. And my guess is that this fall will just be the beginning that we're going to have to do this over a multi-year period.
If I may just, can you repeat that?
Yes.
So if I understand this correctly, the grant doesn't allow you to do this to a private institution?
There's some, of course, there's requirements in the grant where you have to have certain staffing on hand in order to be eligible. We need a certain number of students with special needs in order for the grant to be sent to the Ashfield preschool. And we simply didn't have any students with special needs. And so that's, that's a glaring problem. Yes, that we would, we would be just blatantly violating what the Department of Education said this grant is for. So we tried to get in front of this and talk with the Ashfield preschool ahead of time. Because we currently send students from Ashfield with special needs to Buckland Children. Because at Buckland Children, we do have the special ed staffing to be able to serve those students.
Can I ask, Laura, can speak to that? Can that be changed about our preschool so that we are eligible?
I would accept that if you want. Who can speak to that?
Nancy, I'm sorry.
Nancy, can you speak to that?
Well, the inception of the preschool, it's my understanding, we've been a bit of a hybrid. Mary Link can address that because she's been involved in the finances much longer than I have. But we have almost always had access to different state grants. They have dwindled, dwindled, dwindled. The last grant we've had access to, the language changed to become inclusion. It was grant money that had to be used for staffing. And in more recent years, it changed to be inclusion. So you're excluding special needs children into your program. And we do have special needs children. It's just the ones that we have fall on the lower spectrum so they don't have their IEPs, these individual plans. Don't require that they have a special ed teacher on hand. These might be children with speech障礙. So we do have some special needs children. And the language of the grant required 15%, but that meant four and a half children, and we only had three and a half children that fit that criteria. So we lost out on the grant this year. So we have functioned this year for the first time with no assistance from any entity anywhere on the planet. We fortunately do have a line of credit with preschool cooperative. We've had used that to the full extent. And we will just look for greener, more healthy pastures in the future. But we were excluded from that grant because it is an inclusion grant. How ironic. Does that answer the question?
What's the best we can do? Okay, I see a lot of hands. Uh, this is what I have. I have a young lady who hands up right now. You're next. I think I have on deck, Ron Kohler, followed by Doug Franston. I think Sandy Lilly, was that her hand?
Yeah.
Judy House. David Coe, and Mary Stone. And then Mary Link. It's been. Okay. So, young lady in the top shirt?
Hi, Billy Thompson, Plainfield. I therefore, am I allowed to ask a question for this?
Um, well, first of all, if you're not a registered voter, you should be sitting in the flag. Are there any other people who are not registered voters, who are not registered voters? Why don't you speak from there, man, but then you have to move over there. You haven't voted on anything, have you?
No, no.
So I have permission?
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, for this time, registered voter, Ashley, can you speak to the meeting?
Yes.
Anybody yet? You're on.
Um, hi, I'm from Plainfield. I have two children imminently coming into the preschool system. They, at this point, are very likely to be going to the Plainfield actual private school preschool because of the transportation issue. We are both full-time working parents in transportation logistics. It's like, they're rival GPS, you know? As I'm sure you all, you know, parents know. Is it my understanding that currently Sanderson will have a half-day program? And the full-day program is in the works, or is that a go?
It's a go.
And what is the timeframe of that set?
So, from, I can, I can respond with, with, I don't know if my timeframes are exactly right, but the gist is, we will have full day available. The morning will be free, the afternoon will be tuition-based. And we're intending, based on our particular students that, that register, to, to structure before-school and after-school programming to support working parents like you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, just a minute. No, I got it. We'll share it through the microphone if you want. I think, I, the next is Sandy Lilly.
Sandy Lilly, Thompson, and Sanderson Street. I want to, um, hop to a different subject.
Yeah, Carrie, you can.
I want to hop to a different subject. Superintendent Brinkley, I know that the Covington School is closing again this school year. How many, um, do you have a handle on approximately how many of those children want to come to Sanderson and hopefully with tuition for each student?
So the superintendent from the Central Berkshire College, who talked about the situation ahead of time, their district is offering preschool. They're closing their old elementary school, but they are, they are offering a tuition-based preschool. Do you remember that? Right now, we have, I think, four students registered from Covington. Now, I just want to be clear on this. The free preschool portions just for Ashfield, Plainfield, and district students, not for out-of-district students. Our current tuition rate for, a full tuition rate is $4 per hour. A reduced rate is $3 per hour, and the lowest rate is $2. And the lowest rate is $2 per hour. And that's all based on free or reduced lunch, which is federally dictated by income levels.
Yes, Laura?
Was the four students, are you considering preschool, like, or considering, you know, all the grades?
Oh.
That's where I was.
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
But you have families that...
We have had families, yes. I'm guessing about 10 across all the grades, but I really need to look it up and be precise with you.
And then what's the tuition for the annual tuition that we would receive for...
Oh, so you're talking to school choice questions?
Yes.
So families that come between K and six, will receive as a $5,000 school choice tuition from the Seminole School District. And that is that the Covington enrollment is part of the reason why we're seeing the enrollment numbers. Sanderson's enrollment, if I'm not mistaken, had gone down to something like 115 in the past few years. And we're looking at 145 and probably more just budget practices.
Okay, I have Mr. Kohler next.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to speak as a former Long Range Planning Committee member. The committee was disbanded. And I encourage everybody to look on the school website at a report, a white paper that was done on January 21st of this year. It was a two-year process, okay? And how the whole process started was to select... The school committee came to the select boards of all of the member towns, community districts, bearing in mind the fact that a number of years earlier, they... We had a Blue Ribbon Panel that was trying to come up with solutions for our educational assistance because of declining enrollments and so on and so forth. So unlike the Blue Ribbon Committee that they had before, they said, let's engage the towns. So they came to the select boards, and this select board had me as the liaison. And every town's select board appointed someone. And I'm going to say, we were 75% of this committee, the Long Range Planning Committee, which is a subcommittee of the school committee. Every board to the school committee had select board members on it or other appointees. There were a couple from Heath that were... There was a FinCon Chair there and so on and so forth. And so they wanted to engage them in a different way because they wanted to build a solution with the towns as opposed to just passing something on. Now, from the very beginning, the decision was made that this was a district-wide solution, a sustainable solution, not kind of like that. Now, we're all bound by the regional agreement, handcuffed, bound, however you want to think of it. And what... With the declining enrollments, we had to come up with probably 10 to 15 recommendations that would be sustainable and substantial to make a difference and bring people into the district. That's a very important thing to know of. Now, people who want to move into our area, education is probably one of the fundamental things. Of course, they're looking at the cell phones and seeing if there's cell coverage or broadband coverage and so on and so forth. So if you want to be more than a retirement community, you want to bring people in, you have to offer something that probably isn't out there elsewhere. There were also a number of studies, and so it was a two-year process that we engaged in. The first year, we were just collecting data. And all that data is available, verified, and marked as to where the data came from on that school website. I really encourage you to look at the recommendations. And the thing that's important with this is that a couple of the studies said that there are a lot of people being underserved when you have a tuition requirement. And when you look at the towns in our district, with nine towns, we have six preschools, five public, one private. The private school charges a flat tuition rate with some assistance. Two of the public schools charge a sliding rate tuition for residents. Three of the public schools charge no tuition, no tuition, for residents, and policies vary for non-residents.
It's a mess.
If someone wanted to move into the district, they're trying to figure out, where do I go? You know? And so the recommendation by Long Range Planning Commission was, listen, you need a uniform policy. It's really important that this district be united on having a uniform policy to bring people into the district. These two studies, which are very important, say that when kids go to preschools, generally when they graduate from high school, you know? So that was important to the district, to get people in on the coattails of preschool. And secondly, there are some people who are being underserved because they can't afford preschool. And those people are planning catch-up for the rest of their lives, so studies say. And so we think it's time that we take this on as an educational sort of mandate, offer it. For Sanderson, if you look at the... We're at about 49 or 50% capacity, instructional capacity now. Having 25 to 30 students bumps it up close to 70%. And we're not looking to steal kids from other towns. It has a tendency to happen if you degrade it from a district point, to a town-by-town basis, people will migrate to those towns where it's tuition-free. So I said, it's really important as a district to have this uniform policy so that we bring people from outside. So I just wanted to share all of those facts with you. And the Long Range Planning Committee, this was one of the key ones. Are you going to take a moment at some point to talk about, you just received a lovely grant, on another Long Range Planning Commission recommendation was to get our boilers off of fossil fuels and start moving towards renewable resources in the central office?
When we get to the Capitol, okay?
Okay. I'm Mr. House, and then Mr. Franston. Franston?
Judy House, Long Range, Plainfield. I just wanted to know if preschools are eligible to ride the bus? And what impact it curves of capacity and does that lose money?
No, preschools are not eligible to ride the bus.
Okay.
Okay. Is it pertaining to that, Ms. Carroll?
It's Mr. Ron.
I'm sorry?
It pertains to just to follow up Ron's topic.
Okay, I'll put you on the list of people who would believe this. Okay, I have Doug Franston.
Doug Franston, Brooklyn Drive. Preschool in Asheville has been here for many years and...
I'll give you...
Preschool in Asheville has been here since the 1950s. And Vera Percy was perhaps the first one to have a preschool here in the town. My children were a part of that. I don't think they suffered at all from going here. In fact, they probably benefited. And even today, students that go to this preschool here are... Have excellent leadership. And I think this is very important in trying to maintain this type of community wellness. And I don't think we can compare a town that's up in the hills here to a town that's way up on top of the hills, as far as geographics go, weather goes, bus schedules go. And it's a whole different story. So when you're trying to make nine towns in such a wide variety of locations, all played by the same rules, it makes it very difficult for this program to seem more viable. We now have a community that's open well care of by our preschools, if it's only one over the years. And I think it would be a handed expense, and probably more expensive, to try to implement a preschool at a district level than it would be to maintain the present preschool that we have here in the county. And I'm hopeful that we think long and hard about the final cost of what it is that we're trying to do. It may be well better for the state of Massachusetts to say, we now have so many preschools on a district level. But can you imagine a two- or three-year-old, or even a five- or four-year-old going all the way from Plainfield to here to go to preschool? Or even the ones in Asheville, having to go to a different location? Because maybe we don't have enough students up there, so we've all got to go to children? And then we got to travel all that long distance? I like to keep our schools in our town. We've lost our high school, but it took the heart right out of the town. I don't want to lose the grammar school, and I hope we don't lose the preschool. Because that is the soul of our town, is our young children and our schools that bring them on.
Thank you, Mrs. Franston. You're going to go, please.
So I agree with much of what you've had to say there. And I just want to say again, we want to do this in a way that works for the community. Emily did mention, we do have an equity issue though. And Ron was getting at that as well. And I understand that we're not trying to shoehorn in on one-size-fits-all. But we've been in a situation where certain three- and four-year-olds from this community, from families that couldn't afford to go to preschool, have been underserved. And that's been going on for a long time. And we've... I'm 10 years serving this community, and we're only now getting to this. And we happen to be in directly with the preschool to try to address that. So that's an important issue here. But I want to come directly to the cost issue. One of the driving reasons behind offering preschool, besides the obvious educational benefits, is the long-term savings of special needs costs. There are longitudinal studies of school districts that have done this over time to show that by introducing preschool, they've saved 3% to 5% on their entire special education budget because they're getting the kids earlier in life. So if you're dealing with issues of three-and-four years, three-and-four, instead of five-and-six, you end up, in many cases, getting kids on the right track with it costing less money. But that's looking at it over a period of time. So there is a compelling financial reason for this approach as well, to save money. Could I ask you another question, please?
Quick, Bob? Yes.
I have a grandson who needed to go to special schools, special needs. Because he fell under the umbrella of what it is you need to be to receive this education, he was refused. My daughter had to pay $2,000 a week, came off the island, onto mainland, and she had to lose that much work, it was eight weeks, and for him to get what he needed. And I'm just afraid with all the rules and regulations that come with this kind of monies, in a small town like this, we're never going to be above the umbrella. And we don't stand to that, to gain by going to a district level without preschools.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else have a question?
I would just be repeating myself. I think that the data and the research says otherwise. That particular situation that you're talking about, I don't know nearly enough about it to understand where things went sideways. But with our kiddos, if they have a special need, it's our responsibility to identify that, and we have a legal requirement to serve that. Generally speaking, we try to offer as much programming as we can in our schools because we know that our kids are better... They're better off going to their local school than having to go off to some, a different, a special school further away. But there are some extreme cases where we simply don't have the programming and it's too expensive to offer it. So we do have to send most students out of the district. And inside the school budget, that comes up as special education tuition.
Thank you. I have David Colton, Mrs. Stone, follows David.
David Colton, Phil Grove. I feel very conflicted about supporting the school budget because of the preschool. All four of my kids went to the preschool, and it's a really special program that we have developed as a community over many years, and many of you here have been part of the preschool. And from my perspective, I really applaud Nancy's comments that seem just very courageous about our hopes to continue the preschool. From my perspective, I think that this is really devastating for the preschool. And in particular, Superintendent Bonacani has said that he wishes to work with the Asheville Community Preschool. But if I understand things correctly, the proposal here is not just to offer a halfway preschool tuition-free, but there are proposals on the table to also offer a full day with half-day tuition, which would be subsidized according to the school sort of issues and so on. So it would be significantly less to send your kid to Sanderson. Plus, there's discussion about having after-hours programs, which is one of the key things that Nancy said that our Asheville Community Preschool offers, which is additional care before and after school. So it seems to me that if I were making this decision, it would be really hard pressed, despite the incredible character and programs that are offered, that are very unique to our Asheville Community Preschool that we all love, it would be hard for me as a parent to choose to send my kid there given this due option. So I think it's a real shame in some sense, but I also recognize, as Fran said, some tremendous benefits in terms of the long-term benefits to our town. So I feel really conflicted about this, and I wish that there were a way that we could have solved this problem differently, perhaps. For example, if it would maybe would be legal to offer some sort of vouchers to parents so that they could send their kids to a preschool, and that could include the Asheville Community Preschool. Or that the... Or that there could be some better partnership with a private preschool. And I would be surprised if it was unprecedented. I would guess that there would be private preschools around the state that, where there was some sort of cooperation in terms of education. But as it stands, I think that this is going to be devastating. And unfortunately, we don't have the ability to reach down into the details of this and say, we'll pass this budget only if the school offers a half-day of free preschool and nothing else, because we don't want it to undermine the Asheville Community Preschool. We don't have that power. We can only, you know, vote to approve this budget or not. And that's one of the difficulties of here, where you just got this big number. So I feel really conflicted, and I hope that further discussion can help me make a decision because I think this is a potential serious problem for the preschool.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Mary Stone.
Mary Stone. I just... Need the mic. You can't hear me? I can hear you.
Hang on. Give this mic back.
I'm Mary Stone. Hold your mic. I'm Mary Stone. I live on South Street, and I just want to second what both the superintendent and Mr. Kohler have said. There is tremendous material in the media about the differences that are becoming really dangerous between people in the middle class and upper-middle classes and the poor. Do we really want to offer preschool? Because there are also a huge amount of studies showing, as he said, he keeps... Some of the more are graduating, and of the genuine to kids as students, of having that early education. So I'm not going to say anything more, because I think you've already heard it, but I'm just seconding what you said, and ask you all to think, if we want to be a town where some people can have that kind of education and others cannot.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Or who is that name?
I'm Deborah Horton from Baptist Corner Road. And I have been an early childhood educator in both...
And ask you all to think, if we want to be a town where some people can have that kind of education and others cannot.
Thank you, Mrs. Snow. Courtney, is that your name?
I'm Deborah Horton from Baptist Corner Road. And I have been an early childhood educator in both private and public schools for over thirty years. So I did want to answer one question that has come up a couple of times about the possibility for public-private partnerships. They are, they do exist. There are districts in our area in which a private nonprofit agency is operating in conjunction with a public school district. Pioneer does it, Yomontevue does it, or at least they did, and might not currently. So it has been done. It's very, very tricky. As an Asheville resident, I want to say that I absolutely adore the educational mandate for universal access to high-quality preschool. Thank you very, very much. And I believe that offering preschool tuition-free for a portion of the day to everybody is what's needed for the benefit of all of our citizens in our community. I also appreciate the forward-thinking to create consistency across the nine towns. And my own children have been educated here. And nine-town district, widespread. I like that it's coming more and more together and coherent. I agree with other speakers who mentioned the benefit to keeping our students in town. We all live here for a reason, because we love to be here. And certainly, my best working years have been when I've been able to teach here in town. And I will say that I did teach for a year with Asheville Community Preschool when we were offering the after-school care for half-day kindergarteners coming to us from Sanderson. I also believe that it's best to keep kids in one spot and not be transferring them at various points in the day, from one building to another, from one caregiver to another, from one setting to another, from one group of children to another. They're three and four years old, they're very little people. And they deserve to have a consistency and a comfort level in their day that is best served by keeping them in one spot. We're unique because our community invested in preschool here at home before our public school district was able to do that for us. And because we did that, because we created this great institution, and it is an institution in our community now, we're now, at this point in history, in a very tricky spot. It may be that the best way to work this out is with a lot of creativity and partnering. You can run classrooms in which the public school district is providing a licensed educator, a licensed pre-K to grade two, early childhood specialist, I hold that license, for children with and without special needs. You can do that in one classroom with community staff who may not hold that license as well. It's challenging. Would it be cheaper, instead of opening another preschool in this very tiny town? It's a little unbelievable to think of having two preschools in this little teeny town. In thirty years, I've worked in many different-sized towns, and nobody our size has two. They're lucky if they have one. And would it be cheaper for the district to place a teacher in the Baptist Corner facility? I don't know, but I can tell you the fact is that last summer, I taught for the district in the preschool classroom for children with special needs who require summer services. We operated one classroom, and that was in Colrain. And so every morning, three days a week, I drove from two houses up from Baptist Corner Road's preschool out to Colrain. And a number of students from Asheville and from Plainfield were bused or driven by their parents out to Colrain so that we could spend the morning together, providing them the programming that they needed. I will say that it did strike me as questionable whether there wasn't a more creative way to do that without all of us transporting ourselves all over West County. I guess I am conflicted as well, extremely conflicted. I want this accessibility for the families, but I'm thinking about our beautiful community. And I just want to encourage the people who are working on this and who are talking about the potential for partnerships, to please keep at it. It is hard, and it may really take some outside-of-the-box thinking. But if partnership was the way that people decide to go, it's possible. It's being done, and it may be the right thing. But thank you all for working on preschool, and I know you.
Thank you very much. Carol, oh, yeah. Well, here's what I have. I didn't have a few years in. And I'm sorry, I couldn't read my writing. Then I have Ricky Carroll. And then I have Tom, and then I have this driver, and then I'll catch some pants. So Mary first.
Mary Link, Buckland Road. I was the director of our preschool for seven years, and during that time was when we got the new building. And it was also, I don't remember the exact date, somebody else threw a white, but we got the new building out of Baptist Corner Road and moved out of the church around the same time, within a year or so of the time that we built the new Sanderson. And during that time, we thought, are we going to put our money into buying a building for our preschool if they're going to just build the preschool classroom in the new Sanderson? And it didn't make sense for us to do that if they were going to do that. We had a lot of conversations between the Sanderson Building Committee and the preschool, and there was a decision that they were not going to include preschool in the new Sanderson, certainly at least not at that time. Time has gone by since then, and yes, things may change. But the history is that we had an agreement that we were not going to build those preschool classes. The preschool still needed a building, and we should build our building, and we would continue to work together for many years from very early on. Soon I wrote the first grant to the state from the preschool. I mean, we're one of the first preschools in the state to have a lab process with the public school. And that grant is part of why we're here today, is because that's changed over time, as the superintendent said, and so it has become more and more and more restrictive. One of the questions that I have in that regard is to your point about if there's only two special needs students here, then we can't, we have to move them somewhere because it's not enough in the current grant to cover the kind of hybrid that Deborah was talking about, putting a teacher in at Asheville Preschool, which we did talk about doing that, and we didn't have those numbers. If the numbers aren't here, and you only had enough, and those students were being served because you took them to Shelburne, Buckland Shelburne, to serve them, won't you still have to take those students to Buckland Shelburne if you only have two in your public preschool? That's one question. I could come back to that, you can hold that. So the history is that we decided that we would keep going, and the town supported us. And then the other thing, because I look around the road, we bought a building. We renovated a building. You know, at least half the people in this room paid for that building, gave over bad nails, painted walls. This was our preschool, and it's still our preschool. And I've never gotten up here ever. I used to be on the school committee. I used to be chair of the Budget Subcommittee for the School Committee. I have never gotten up here and been opposed to the school budget. I have always, like, supported it 100%. And I was totally conflicted, because I was really sad that Gen. preschool went down the tubes and we lost it because of declining enrollment, setting up this competition, which you're trying to fill a school, and you're trying to fill the school by taking the students that have been coming to Asheville Preschool for over thirty years. And so it is a competition. We had very courteous, good meetings, trying to figure something out. But in that, just the same as the town, and the schools have a competition over money. And, you know, the schools have to put their, you know, their priorities in, and the town has to put its priorities in. The same is true. And I don't think, unless they do some really creative stuff and can reform and do early care that's before preschool and daycare, then that preschool isn't going to exist. And that would make me really, really sad. And I don't see any reason that you would be motivated to continue a collaboration if this passed and you have a preschool in the new, in the Sanderson, you build a new preschool and you put it in there. One of the things that Sanderson, that Asheville Preschool has also offered is year-round. There's a summer preschool program there. So parents get something year-round. There's vacation weeks, there's preschool there. There's preschool there from early in the morning until the evening. And historically, I think one of the other things is I've heard that the Select Board didn't approve giving some of the money to meeting families to the preschools. While it happened for the seven years I was here, it stopped, and that has stopped again. And I'd like to see some figures about what it would cost to subsidize the preschool enough to be able, for the preschool to once again be able to have anybody come. When I was there, anybody could come. We've made it possible for people to come regardless of their income. And we have a sliding scale, but we've made it work. And yes, I agree, it'd be great to have a free preschool. It would be great to have that consistency. The kids that graduate from our preschool are on the honor roll today at Mohawk. The preschool has brought kids from Covington and from Boshan and from Conway and from all kinds of places into our community. Some of them have stayed, and we've brought school choice kids in. So we've done already a lot of the things that are being presented as opportunity by having this new preschool there. That preschool will cost the town, and we're still paying for this Sanderson, but the preschool around the corner is all paid for, and has been for some time. And we'd be paying for the teachers there as a town, whereas now, the people that use it pay for it, and the caramel apples pay for it, and the face painting at Fall Festival pays for it, and your donations pay for it. So it's really, it's really hard. But I would hope that if this does go forward, that there is still some motivation to keep some kind of partnership, and so that there is something, so that this gem in our community doesn't get completely lost.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to touch people on, says quality, excuse me.
Sorry.
Yes, I will call it. First, I want to make a comment, which is, Polly, this is a very happy quality thing, in my view. I'm learning a lot, we're all learning a lot. I want to find out, Superintendent and Business Manager have to go to another county before one o'clock, and we have another five articles related to the school. We have perfectly competent school committee members here to talk about what's going on, but we're going to lose them at some point. So I'm going to ask people, if it has already been said, if you can refrain from asking a question. All of that was good information, that was great information. I asked the superintendent to respond to that.
So to the point, I know this feels, this is conflictual, Mary, I know it is. To answer your question about those special needs students, our intention is to serve those students in the local schools. We're not going to be shipping kids between schools. Unless, there's always an unless, and that's if we have a cluster of students with a particular disability, where it's beneficial to those kids to have them together. And instead of sending them out to Westfield or some faraway place, we would then maybe move them to a central location and provide them services more easily. Otherwise, the point here is to keep our kids in their local schools. And I just want to say this. We're motivated to continue collaborating and working with the preschool. We are. I know how important it is. We've talked about this for a long time. I have a high opinion of Nancy, and you, and all the folks behind that school. So I don't know what the answer is, but I want you to know that our attitude is that we are partners to you.
Can I follow? Why is it that you could...
I'm sorry, right. It's related to it?
Yes. Just why is it that you could provide a teacher for two students in Sanderson, but not at Asheville Community Preschool?
Well, our intention is to find teachers that are dual-certified, classroom teacher and special needs. So it's not necessarily having to hire an additional teacher.
Okay. I have Ricky Carroll, I have Tom, and I have this driver, and then I'll look for...
Ricky Carroll, Main Street. I have a couple of things. Ron, I have to disagree with one of the things you said first. I just feel a little bit bent by your calling the situation that we have now a mess. Because I think that all the schools and all the people involved, and the preschool, have done the best that they can with what we have at the time. And so, yes, at the current time, there is a reconstruction that people are looking at, and that times are changing, and that different needs are, need to be met. But I don't want to call it a mess right now, because I think that's a little bit insulting to the people that have worked so hard on all these things that the towns have right now. I also talked to some people in town who are thrilled with the fact that there will be a possibility of a free, even three-hour preschool, because right now, they can't force Sanderson kids anywhere. And as far as I know, the town cannot support financially the private preschool. So it is a very confusing issue. But I think that change is difficult. And sometimes, we do things at one time, and it doesn't work later. And we make the best decisions that we can at the time. I think that looking at the issue for about, and putting the kids first rather than finances first is really important also. Because I don't think, I think that the committee that made recommendations, I think it's a little bit more looking at the finances than kids. I do agree that, I think that if the two entities work together to form some kind of way to have a connection, that it would be wonderful in the long term. And Mary said something, because we're not just filling the school, but there are really parents who can't afford to send their, they live in Asheville, can't afford to send their kids to school. And apparently, there's not just a handful of them, there's many. And they really are wanting to get some kind of help, and the preschool is a good way to do it. So it sounds encouraging to me that there's been a lot of talk between the two systems. And I hope it continues. And I think that what we've had up to now has really worked for a lot of people, and that people have put a lot of energy into it, like you stated. So we can't really say that, oh, we have this mess. It's just not a cohesive, it's just not a uniform whole. But I think that it all worked out until now, and we just are out of change.
So can I make a follow-up? Because she was asking for me, correct?
Perhaps wrong choice of word, a mess. It's inconsistent, very inconsistent, and because of its inconsistency, it's very confusing to people outside the district. And the second thing, very quickly, is that we weren't just looking at financial viability in the Long Beach Planning Committee, we looked at the report. It was all about sustainability, which financial, the financial component is a very big part of it also.
Thank you, Polly. Chris, I'm going to call on you, who haven't been heard yet. I got you on the list as the person for the second time, and I'll put you on as well. Is there a man?
Thank you. So many thoughts have been expressed already, and I want to try not to be redundant. Anyone in, you know, our family, we had both of our children go through the Asheville Community Preschool, or a lot of families here who put their kids through the Asheville Community Preschool. And it was a fantastic experience for us and for our kids. And our tuition was more than our mortgage pays. So when our kids got to Sanderson and kindergarten, just anecdotally, we know that the kids who did not go to preschool, it was very obvious to us which kids did not get the advantage of going to preschool. of going to preschool versus the kids who were advantaged enough to get to preschool. It was night and day how well-prepared our kids were for school versus kids who could not afford to go to preschool. And I think that if there is some way that the private preschool and the public school can collaborate, I think that'd be fantastic. My personal feeling is that the private preschool would probably end up closing. I think that's the reality of it. I hope that that would be the case because they are a wonderful resource, but I think they probably would end up closing. But I think that it's more important that all children in our district have that advantage of going to preschool. And the resource that's down there on Baptist Corner Road can be repurposed for another needed community need. I'm sure there's something that we can do, but.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber.
Yes, Todd pretty much stole half of what I was going to say, so I'll thank him for, you know, saying that. You know, as a father of three, who put my kids through preschool, we definitely see the advantage. And, you know, really just to be able to open it up to, you know, everybody that has three brothers. That's what kind of convinced me that having it for everybody, not shutting away, you know, people that can't afford it. And then my second piece was, you know, putting my finance committee hat on was the Superintendent , like, how it was, as kids like K through six, as they come in, you know, whether they come in from Covington or whatnot, what, A, what is the tuition rate of the kids that are coming in? And then, secondly, does that money, how does that money come into the budget? Does it go directly into the Sanderson budget? Or does it go to Mohawk overall? And if it comes into the Sanderson budget, does it, you know, A, either reduce our portion that we pay or B, enrich what the kids are getting?
So this is a good opportunity for me to introduce our new business administrator. Mr. Mike Cuccella just joined us last year, so we'll have Mike come through.
Well, K through six is school choice. So that goes into a revolving fund and it's used to offset the operating budget for all the district schools as well as Sanderson. So it's, it's part of the, the school choice formula. They get $5,000 per student that comes from Covington or any other school to K through six or K through 12 for that budget. So it's a school choice receiving through the cherry-sheep state revenue.
Okay. Is there follow-ups to that?
No, you can do your question.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Murray, can we keep going through the list? I have Ms. Kohler here who's been waiting, Mr. Precourt, then Mr. Murray. Is it related, Mr. Murray, to what you spoke about?
Uh, it is, it follows these two comments up here.
Okay, then I'm going to call on Mr. Murray to follow those two comments. Ms. Kohler, Mr. Precourt, and that one.
I simply want to point out that what you've heard from the members of the Finance Committee you've just spoken underscore the degree to which we as the Finance Committee, looking at this issue very carefully, believe that this is a, an operating budget, including the preschool component, which is worthy of your support. We support it unanimously, largely for the reason, notwithstanding the fine record of the Ashfield preschool, which we acknowledge, we think we have to be careful not to simply preserve institutions as such as they've long been operating. We would love to see a change and modify and orbit conjunction with the school system as been discussed here this morning, but we think the critical thing is the children to be served. And our concern has been, a deep concern about the degree to which all children have access to some form of preschool. And in our judgment, some form of free preschool is absolutely mandatory in this day and age. It's the one leverage point that you can make, the most gain on educationally, anything you do. This is better than introducing calculus courses, it's better than introducing international travel, it's getting youngsters at a critical time of preschool to get them ready to participate and have a successful learning career. And so our judgment is, notwithstanding a lot of the issues that have been raised here this morning, that some access is going to be gained by poor families who simply cannot otherwise get it. I was struck by Senator Elizabeth Warren's comments, when she said, "Every study out there shows that every nickel we spend on our youngest learners pays off throughout all their years in school and throughout a lifetime. We should have universal free kindergartens for all our kids, but we should have much more for our early learners, especially those who come from poor families." This is how we create opportunities in this country. Our judgment has simply been that we cannot afford to have families that can't pay for Ashville preschool, or even in some cases, the other preschools with sliding scales, they need some access, and we think preschool, free preschool is the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I have Esther Kohler, Jeffrey Precourt, then Todd Carter. So, call.
I'm Esther Kohler, Main Street. I have a three-year-old and a one-year-old, so it just ages me a lot. But anyways, I am, I'm pretty excited about the situation with both the preschool in Ashville and the preschool at Sanderson. As it is, I haven't gone back to work because I wouldn't really make any money having a kid to childcare. So I'm excited to send my eldest to the free preschool and then my youngest to Ashville preschool, and I think it would be really healthy for them to see other kids and interact. And also, I mean, preschool and what you made of it as any school is, it's what the parents and the children put into it. So I think-
That's my little trick for cutting off debate.
We love but lover.
Yeah, that's the same name, that's the public preschool. It does the special place that parents want to play, because they have been, as a prior one. Childcare is so hard, it's so down the road, you drive so far to work anyways, and you have to drive so far to daycare, and to find a daycare is so hard. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to the whole preschool change available for younger children.
Thank you. Mr. Precourt, Mr. Carter on deck, and behind you, I don't know your, your name, man, but you're after Mr. Carter.
Jeffrey Precourt, Ellis Road. I have enormous difficulty voting for good intentions. I hear Mr. Kohler's plan, long-term plan, Mr. Bordeconia, I haven't heard any reaction to that, whether that was considered, whether that would reshape this. I apologize to you all, I write after this, this motion was raised, I see $2 million. I think to myself, no, I think if I had $2 million in the step that was going to fund the free portion at Sanderson and pumped it into a community school that is really part of our DNA in town, to get back to the base that Murray was talking about, where it was open and free to everybody. Let's not talk about the intentions of, maybe we'll do this and somehow we'll try to do that. Let's take a look at the long-range plan, let's see if the money that would, that portion of the money that would fund the free preschool, if we can put that into the community preschool. And, and let's, let's not talk about intentions, let's talk about the plan. I am thrilled-
With all due respect, you did come a little late then.
Yep.
There are grant, uh, things that may complicate that, there's a desire to be stressed by the Superintendent to collaborate that. A number of people, very concerned, asked for exactly that, to have the school's grant money used on that site. And so it has been great.
Can, can, excuse me, moderator, can we break that out and, and, and maybe discuss that as a formal amendment to this?
I think what you're asking is, can we devise a question? And, no, we can't. Chapter 71, Section 34, is thumbs up or thumbs down on the school committee's budget, whatever the school district's budget is?
Last comment, I'm, I'm pleased that we're talking about special needs children. Last year, Mr. Superintendent, when I raised the question, you said go to the website. So I'm glad we're talking about real people, real mothers and real children.
Thank you. I think we've been going through, we have, we've been there in very, very discussion about Mr. Carter. And then, I don't know, you have to go next.
I, uh, I'm the father of two exceptional Ashville students. And, uh, and I feel a lot of emotion in this room about changes to the preschool education. And I'm not saying it's not well-founded, because I think it is. But when we're talking about the long-term health of the students, of the children, of the school, and the communities, I think we have to start separating some of that. I think Mr. Lennox's point is that the resources that are put on North Street, certainly that can all be retooled and redirected after a certain amount of the session. But I know there's a lot of emotion because everyone that's been here has said, I feel, okay? I want to be the first one to come up and say, I support the school committee budget as presented. Okay? I think there's been a lot of work and a lottery, just the same as when the Finance Committee and the Select Board go through our capital needs and our projections over the course of the next 10 years. The money that's going to be spent, and if you, anybody that made it to the, when the Long Range Planning Committee presented their report to the school committee, that this is a first step in a longer process, okay? To have more students spend their careers in the Mohawk District. It's quite a bit like being in business. All of us at one point or another are in business and you say, oh, no, I can't. This is terrible, I've got so much to do. Well, the opposite end of that is what Mohawk District has right now. They don't have enough to do. So that is a way worse problem. We have these resources, we have facilities, we are, we have buses running, yawn, yawn. We don't really have enough students. And over time, by introducing these students at young age and having retention in the district, instead of, of parents taking them somewhere else and getting into that routine and being able to influence that, uh, is, uh, is where we need to go. So, uh, we've been, we've been on this same track that we're on today for the last 20, maybe 30 years. And it worked great 20 years, 15 years. But it's not working so well. So for us not to change and not to support this budget, I feel, I really know, right? Is, is that we would be turning our back. If it's not working, we have to do something to change it and move the ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I'll give you a minute.
Erica Parker, West Road. I am wearing two hats, and that also makes me very, very conflicted about this. I am a member of the board, a current board of the Ashville preschool, and a parent of a current Ashville preschool student and a current Sanderson student. And I really feel strongly about supporting something that would support the health of our schools. I feel strongly about my options for parents. And I just wanted to speak to the, the entity of the current preschool board and how we are to work with the district, to work cooperatively with Sanderson, and to try to come up with something that would really be a healthy option for both schools. All the, the current parents felt very passionately about the current Ashville preschool, and as, as you've heard, the community is passionate about preschool. We are not going to close. We are going to do everything in our power not to close, as Nancy spoke to earlier. We are planning to open up a toddler program for these younger kids, and that is a need that has been identified many times too, as being, being something that, that is really needed for this community, is care here locally for those younger children, that, that 15 months to 30 months. And so we, we are working hard to reinvent ourselves, but, um, I guess I feel that, that there maybe hasn't been as much exploration as there could been of how, how we could have a partnership, some of these things of how the private and public entities could actually work together and what that would cost versus the cost of putting the preschool at Sanderson. I wish that there, that there were more information available about that now before we make this close. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to do one more time. Article 12, we're on Article 7 of 30. We have five more articles to deal with, so I'm going to ask those people to hand you a vote. If what they're going to say has already been said, I'm going to ask you to refrain from saying it possibly. I think that's a great debate over here for, Ryan Clark.
Remove the question.
Again. Okay, it's a question, it's a motion to cut off debate. That is non-admissible, it's non-debatable, it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So all in favor of cutting off debate are in Article 7. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
I'd say that ayes have it. Anybody require a, a count in order to assert that, to assure ourselves that it was two-thirds? Anybody requesting a count? Okay. And the motion to carry this debate is cut off. We're going to go to the main motion, which is a motion that the town hopes to raise, hopes to raise an appropriator's transfer from available funds, 2,000, 2,000,028,973 paid for regional educational expenses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
I, I would rule that as a majority in favor. Does anybody disagree on my count? Okay, that motion carries.
Yeah, I would say, I would like, I would like a count on that.
You would like a count? You don't think yet there was a majority in favor?
In favor of closing debate or of taking the motion?
No, we already, we already closed the debate. We closed the motion. It only requires a simple majority. Closing debate requires two-thirds. This is just, you know, a half plus one is required. Do you still want to count?
I'd like to count.
Sorry. So my, my policy has always been a one-person, a two-person count. We'll certify a count if we think we can.
We're going to do a hand count.
We're going to do a hand count, not the- All right, please. Let's get, let's be efficient. Is there anyone sitting in this block of seats or in that block of seats who does not register voter back? Is everyone here a registered voter? Are there any registered voters sitting over here? All right, we're all set. Everybody's a registered voter in these two blocks, right? Okay. Ready? Okay, it's in the house. Where is that for that? I can't hear that. All of those in favor, thank you. Article 7, raising appropriator, uh, we're transferring 2,000,028,973 to regional educational expenses. Raise your hands and keep it up until I tell you otherwise.
Favorite?
Okay, you got your hand down. Okay. All right, may put your hands down. Thank you. Give me a second.
Deborah D E B R A.
Thank you, Joe.
I, I ordered this summer, last summer, preschool, special, preschool summer.
Okay, so, um, there were 64, yes, 13 no, and five abstentions. The motion carries a simple majority. Thank you. Okay, Article 8.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
I move the town allow the district to borrow a sum of money not to exceed $800,700. TV spending under the direction of the School Building Committee for repair work to the Mohawk Trail Regional Mill and High School located at 26 Asheville Road in Buckland, Massachusetts, to include boiler doors, lockers, security ventilation, and video upgrades totaling $250,700.
Thank you. There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this?
Last year, we came to you with a request that was over half a million dollars, and you all said, "Yes, we'll give you the money to work on repairs at Mohawk." However, this requires the acceptance of all of our district towns, and we had one town that rejected it. So you guys didn't end up having to pay, we didn't get cash. So we're coming back again for a second try. This one is substantially lower than one who approved last year, so we're hoping that that will be okay.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion. Done? Are we ready to vote? Okay, this two require a simple majority. All those in favor of Articles as read, as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Article 8, Nancy, Nancy, your hopes are excited. Article 9, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move the town allow the district to borrow a sum of money not to exceed $90,000 to be expended under the direction of the School Committee to purchase a school bus to be in District Y totaling $90,000.
Thank you. There's a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak to this?
Yes, we currently own preschool buses and businesses to replace the 2002 school bus that we have. As many of you may know, um, when we last renegotiated our district contract for buses, we only had one company that was willing to bid. And it's sort of a catch-22, you know? We use town money that then can't be used on the roads, and the roads are in bad condition, so only one bus company even wants to, is willing to drive a bus. So one way that we can not behold the higher prices of a non-competitive bid is to own our own school buses. These are used a lot for things like sports, and anybody who saw those last kids in concert, there are times that we have to run more than one bus at a time. We send them out to all our local schools to bring them to Maha to rehearse. So it's really important that we can plus this and we order this one, it's the oldest and the most unreliable of the few that we have, and we can relate to it.
Okay. Their recommendation is finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee.
Thank you, everybody. Over the call, Nancy, who's got a recommendation. Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Legoy.
Ted Legoy, Watson's proof corner. Can you give us a little idea on the return on investment? I understand the flex of all that, but usually we do these things because there is a return on investment as well, to being stuck with one vendor, I understand. Can you give us an idea to return on investment on this investment?
Do you know what that means?
I do know what that means. Thank you. I do, I do know what that means. And it's probably because our facilities are after, so I'm afraid she's not careful to have the best numbers.
I mean, I, I could give you an idea. So these are not the buses that we use to transport the students to school. These are for extracurriculars, field trips, that sort of thing. So we need, we need these three buses available all the time, every day. We would pay $48,000 per year for a school bus going through a vendor. So I think you have to, if you're going to do a return on investment, you're going to have to compare it to $48,000. So I guess our return on investment is about two and a half years, not, my mistake, within two years.
That's a question. Ms. Kohler.
Esther Kohler, would we be able to use the bus for other group rallies that weren't related to school?
Not related to school?
Like, you know, like, town wants to go to like a climate rally or something, or I don't know.
Um, other questions, comments?
How about transporting children from preschool with intention to the Asheville preschool?
I think the superintendent already commented that the preschoolers aren't on the bus. I'm not sure if that would apply to our own bus. I don't think legally we can have preschoolers on the bus with this one.
Other questions, comments on Article 9? Ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of allowing the district to borrow a sum not to exceed $90,000 to purchase a school bus, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Article 9, Nancy, thank you. Article 10?
Mr. Moderator.
You gotta stop being like this.
I move the town allow the district to borrow a sum of money not to exceed $100,000 to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee for repair work to the Sanderson Academy located at 808 North Street in Asheville, Massachusetts, to include boiler replacement and heat valve replacement totaling $100,000.
Second?
Second.
Second for Mrs. Doyle. Could you please explain this?
Yes, I can. Okay, so last year, we came to you with a five-year capital plan, and said this is what we expect to spend on repairs for Sanderson over the next five years. As always, it's our best guess, and so we'd like to present, thank you very much. In the interim, our two boilers at Sanderson started to leak. And I was very upset because I said, "I just was in front of the town of Asheville last year, and I'm telling you, this is what we're going to do for five years, and I don't want to be here in year two asking for money." The good news is, this is just a contingency plan. There is $10,000 in here for a heat valve replacement that we need to do in order to regulate the heat in the buildings. So boilers were a separate issue. We have, I have this $90,000, and that's not all Asheville. That's, if you look at your, one of your sheets, you'll see that Asheville's portion of the boilers is actually only $16,9,138, so we have to vote for the full amount. Um, we're hoping we don't have to spend that. The boilers, you never know, they could go to borrow, it could be several years. So our plan isn't to replace them unless we have to. This vote would essentially kind of put a hold on those funds, so that if something happened, we can make an emergency repair without having to come to you and have a special cabinet meeting and another vote, both here and in Plainfield. But as Mr. Kohler was speaking about earlier, we're applying for Sapphire brand in order to switch Sanderson over into non-renewable fossil fuels. We, I mean, I'll let the superintendent take this on, this is totally...
There's a handout.
There is a handout.
So among the handouts, there is a yellow sheet here, which I'd like you to see. One of the recommendations of recommendations that Mr. Kohler talked about already was to save money to, to transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy. Along these lines, the district has been working along these, in this direction, and so we've kind of sped up our record. But I do want to announce today that Mohawk and Holloman together have received $355,000 to convert their buildings to wood pellet heating systems. And the state is providing 75% of that funding, which is substantial. The way the program works is they really would, they want to spread the money out, so the program director shared with me that our best chance is one building per year. So we're going to be applying every year, but we're starting this year with the heat, the heat school. There's, there's reasons for that. We had already met some of the requirements within the grant, so that heat building already stood out as eligible. So we went forward for the heat building. You can see the breakdown of expenses. The total cost is about $180,000. The grant is $145,000. The cost for the town will be $35,000. We think we're going to save about $11,000 per year, so within four years, it will pay for itself if we have to actually spend that money. We're going to, we're going to try to come in under budget. If we come in under budget, the town won't have to come up with that 25%. If you recall, the Green Repair Project that we did, we put much more money replacing the roof in Mohawk and the windows at Mohawk and some of our elementary schools, we did come in 230% on the budget. So it's not inconceivable that we want people to reduce that amount. But this is part of a bigger picture effort to make our school buildings more affordable, to, to keep our town assessment at a level that the town can afford. And Sanderson is next in the hopper. Next, the principal heat systems are happening in those two boilers. We've got all of the schools now going through the application process with the Sapphire program, but Sanderson's priority is looking at that. And as much as I'd like to say that we won't use any of that money that we're asking for today, even when we transition, when we transition for the wood pellet systems, we are going to have to have a backup system, a small backup system. If the wood, the wood heating system goes down, we need to still be able to heat the buildings. So we're likely end up needing one boiler in that building long-term, but I hope we don't have to spend that money.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. Their recommendation is finance committee?
Representative, Finance Committee, Representative for Article 10, Nancy.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Kohler.
Yeah, I just want to point out quickly, as part of the Long Range Planning Committee, a USDA preliminary feasibility report looked at three schools in the district, Mohawk Trail Regional School, Buckland Sheldon, and Coal Range. And dollar savings and operating costs over 30 years after conversion, they were exploring both wood chips and pellets. But for Mohawk Trail, it's $1.7 million. For Buckland Sheldon, it's $2.4 million. And for Coal Range, it's $1.2 million. So if you take all of those millions of dollars, you put together, you can start to see a pathway to some sustainability, okay? And that's, this is big, big here in long-term. And the central office has really been taking the lead on this recommendation, and with the support of the school committee, and this Sapphire brand is no small deal at all. Very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. The other discussion. Questions, comments? Ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of Article 10 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Also, thank you. Article 11, do I hear a motion?
Moderator, Poppy Doyle, School Committee, Asheville. I would postpone the cycle indefinitely.
There's a second?
Second.
Second, third, fourth. This motion is non-damnedable, but it is debatable. It requires a simple majority. It's different than a motion table where there's no discussion. It requires a two-thirds majority. Would you like to talk a little bit about why?
Well, we were asked, um, we have not changed our opinion about asking Row to return to the district, but we have been advised, we have been asked, just by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to, they've given us a number of questions that they would like to have answered, so our council advised us to rethink or to postpone pass over for now, until we can come up with the end of the, the requirement or the effect to follow.
And we're not sure what that time would be?
No, we don't. We don't have a...
And you say, "We could talk about the school business." Yes.
So there's two things. One, though coming back into the district will require a lot of changes to the regional agreement. The regional agreement was refused by the Department of Education, and they, they have a number of recommendations. And so there, this is a, a card for the organization situation, I guess. The department would like us to make the changes, prepare the vote actually happens. So there's, that's one thing, is we need to change, make changes to the regional agreement. The other thing is how to deal with the capital expenses that are already part of the district. Would Row buy into it? What exactly would Row's responsibility be? Because right now, they pay a tuition, they don't pay any capital. So there would be some participation that needs to be sorted out. So to make this clean for everybody, the recommendation from council was, let's sort, there's one other thing, there's special legislation as well. Because we're so, because we're such a special school district.
Because our children are involved in that.
In order for this district to come together, Holly and Charlamagne, as you know, have a separate elementary school district. They participate just at grade seven through 12. There was special legislation that had to take place to allow that to happen. So that's another recommendation, is to get the language sorted out in the regional agreement, get the capital business taken care of, and get the special legislation done ahead of time, so that when it comes before the voters, all of that stuff is sorted out. So that's the reason for the postponement.
Okay, again, vote to postpone indefinitely, what's on the table? Would they speak to that? Any discussion, any questions, comments? Ready to vote? Vote. I'm sorry, now.
This is a pity how much this was one row. Question about if Row comes back to the district, and then they would then participate in the capital distribution, and would that reduce expenditures from their account?
Row would be participating, not on a tuition level, wait vote, just like you on their assessment. Our projections do indicate that that would save the town's money. The capital piece is the part that we, we need to sort out. Would they pay for any of the prior capital expenses? That's the conversation that needs to happen. Clearly, going forward, if there were any more capital projects done, like in Mohawk in particular, Row would, would pay for a portion of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of postponing indefinitely Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let me ask you nicely. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Articles 11A. Thank you, all. Is there one? Okay. We have one more, but you can go.
Is it on the floor?
Nice try.
To the record, reflect on who business manager did not jump off.
I vote for town amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District, regional district agreement by striking the following line, which contains the section 3D.
Excuse me, anybody agree to waive reading of this motion?
Yes.
Anybody not agree? Okay. You got off easy. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. Mr. Superintendent, we speak to this.
Yes, I beg your pardon. So I vote a plain language explanation in there, which I hope you've had a chance to take a look at. This is on the backside, which color sheet does it belong? The green one, should be on the backside of the green one. So this proposal is really intended to give individual towns more ability to be creative with their schools. This is not about closing schools, but it is about a way to try to find more innovative ways to operate. And so the example that I used in this case would be, for example, if Colrain and Heath wanted to get together and maybe have Heath, for example, be an earlier childhood education center with grades pre-K through two, for example. Colrain may want to focus on grades three through six, then Heath could send its three through six schools, three through six students to Colrain, and vice versa, Colrain would send its pre-K through grade two students to Heath. But these would be negotiations strictly at the town level. The town wanted to do something different than what the regional agreement says now. So the regional agreement says now, if you live in Ashfield or Plainfield, your students go to a specific school for K through six. So this is intended to give the towns more power and really more authority to be creative about how they use their facilities.
Is there a recommendation?
Finance Committee, Mr. Moderator, Representative Ann, in favor of this one article?
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Kohler.
Yeah, this is another suggestion of long-range planning committee, and basically the important thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, is that once these two towns agree to something that affects them only, then only a majority, it's a change in the regional agreement, and rather than a unanimous vote by all members of the town, just a majority vote by members of the district. So it's a significant change in the way we're operating in the regional agreement, and we think it's ineffective.
Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Russell, Hill Road. This seems like a very significant change. And I guess the first thing that I focused on, given how the program is, that it should at least require a supermajority on the department groups that are going to vote on it, that would be the school committee and the involved towns. And I would like to propose an amendment to this, to this article. If I can do that at this time, which would simply be to insert two-thirds prior to the word majority in each instance where it's used.
All right. I'll restate what the motion is, and then I'll seek a second before we go to the proposed motion to amend and discuss it. Midway through, the language proposed to replace the current language is a sentence beginning with the word notwithstanding. Notwithstanding the above students may be educated in the district other than as assigned above upon the letter I, and then it now reads a majority. The proposal is that the word majority be replaced by a two-thirds vote. And furthermore, in the last full clause, be the member town or town served by the district school to which such students will be assigned, comma. Acceptance by each town to be a, where it now reads majority, the proposed amendment is to replace that with two-thirds. Am I right, Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Is there anything else in your amendment? Okay, so those two places where it reads majority, it would now read two-thirds according to that motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, that motion is to amend, the second is, what's on the floor now is the motion to amend only. Yes.
I would discourage the amendment personally. In the first place, to make this change, it has to be unanimously accepted by all towns, okay, to make this change. So if, trying to make life as simple as possible, two towns have a situation that they're encumbering one another or working out a deal, it's fine to make it a more an economist sort of situation where these two towns can work it out and just get a majority backing from the, from the relationship of all the other towns. So I wouldn't make it more difficult. Whether or not this passes, every town has to vote for it, so because it's a change to the original agreement.
Yeah, we shaded.
Do you think, if we change the wording of this, does that mean that's a change for the town?
Absolutely. Question was, if we change it, does that change for the town? Are there, if there are, absolutely. Other questions? Mr. Roddick.
I just have a comment. If you heard what Ron said, and, you know, if you change the language and they don't in any other town, then that's, that's a no. And so I don't know who was arguing it. But we talked a lot about how we were going to structure the vote so that it would be fair. And I know the superintendent likes to use the Colrain heating example, but something that I think is more relevant to us is, is I said, okay, so what if Ashfield and Buckland got together and they said, in order to save on busing costs, let's have all the kids that live on Crescent or Grove go to Sanderson instead of going to ESC. This way, Ashfield and Buckland could agree to do that, and if the school committee, again, if majority of the school committee, which have weighted votes, remember, we represent all the towns, but we also have weighted votes based on our population, or the regional group, I didn't mention that. Then somebody out of Colrain essentially can't block Ashfield and Buckland from coming up with this unless, you know, the school committee finds a real reason to challenge it. We did talk about supermajority and how our committees work together and how the votes are counted. We really felt that this was adequate to provide a flexibility, but also give everybody a say. So I, is that fair?
She rejected. Okay, we're speaking only to the amendment. Any other discussion? How much of the questions that proposed amendment go from the word majority to the supermajority, comma, two-thirds? Ready to vote? All in favor of amending the proposed replacement language by replacing the words majority with the words two-thirds, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
The motion to amend fails. We're back to the main motion, Article 11A. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
I, I'm not trying to drag this out, but I think we've had a really good discussion this morning on education, and I hope the other communities in the district have as well have thought out meaningful discussions as we're having today. I think Emily's discussion about this amendment, or about this change in the district agreement is, we lived that here in Ashfield for the last couple of years with David Newell from the Finance Committee and the Vote Aid Advisory. We've saved tens of thousands of dollars over the course of the last couple of years just by doing some coordinating and trying to find efficiencies in transportation. So I support the change in the agreement to make it more flexible and less rigid, and certainly I believe Ashfield will do that, and I will find it difficult for any community that's concerned about controlling costs to vote against it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 11A? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of amending the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Agreement as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Has this unanimous? So here's today's quiz. Which is going to run faster, the Kentucky Derby participants or our similar attendants? Okay, I hear a motion at this point. I do.
Mr. Moderator. I move to advance Article 15.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, so the reason why I knew this was coming is because while you were still here before we break for lunch, knowing that you might be in exactly this situation, so I was forced to deal with Article 15 before people fly away. And therefore, I said I would entertain a motion to advance Article 15. For that purpose, here, let's deal with this important budgetary article. Ready to vote? All those in favor of advancing Article 15, you're going to vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lennett.
I move the town raise and appropriate $347,268 and transfer $5,000 from the Fred Cross Fund for a total of $352,268 for general government expenses.
Will anybody object to waiving the absolute reading of every single item since you have it for you? Here we go. Objection. Is there a second?
Second.
Please speak to us.
This is the general government expense budget that we came up with. We met with the number of the town department heads, particularly the higher-dollar ones. Had been in open meeting, we had additional contact with other town groups to go over their budgets. As a generalization, most of them didn't get as much money as they're asking for. Another generalization is that we're giving them enough to operate the town officials. The one big change here is a $60,000 town administrator position. That's going to replace the executive administrative position, which is currently at $28,642.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Carter. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. Discussion. This is Lily, Mr. Pliss, in that order.
Senator King Street. Todd, thank you for saying that Row's position is going to be eliminated.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lily, you have to speak up.
I'm sorry. I thank Todd for addressing the elimination of the executive administration administrator, because that $60,000 is not a total amount, the net.
None of the digits.
Only 30, the net, it was 32. And I also wanted to thank Mary for all of her hard work this year. She's put in a lot of hours, and as of July 1st, she very happily retired.
I just want to point out, this is a film wrote to me, and we were planning on doing that at the end of the meeting, and it was over twice.
I was, I had a doubt that I wasn't supposed to do that. But it means a lot.
So I also want to point out, we just had a special town meeting where we allocated $5,000. Would that salary be allowed?
That's true. Let's cover any salaries that we have before the start of the next one.
No, we're getting $32,000 plus the farm.
The special town meeting allocated $5,000 if we were able to get the town administrator to start before, beginning in the next fiscal year, to cover that salary if we retire someone before the law first.
I've got it. I'm good. And I recognize, Mr. Pliss, the $60,000 salary or the total expense?
Although we don't have anyone hired yet, I do know that the search committee has concluded much of their work. I'm sure they're hoping it's all their work, I'm not sure of who. But I'm moving forward to this. It was advertised as arranged from $50,000 to $60,000, and that would be the salary portion of the expense for the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And Mr. Pliss?
So where's the line on it for? Is that just into health insurance? What is the full thing really going to be in taxes and health insurance?
What's the full thing?
What's the full expense going to be to the town?
Well, that all depends on the candidate, right? And what the capital insurance they need and that sort of thing, but those expenses are reflected in our budget. Remember, these are all budget figures. These are our best guesses, they're planned 18 months in advance, will be reflected much later when we get to the employee benefits of the article. And that's mixed in with all the town employees. I wish I could tell you that our crystal ball always was very clear. It's not. We overbudgeted last year, and we used some of that money a month ago to fill in some blanks for this year, so it's in there.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Eric, here it is. I would like to ask, how many hours are you gaining by adding this new position in terms of?
Well, the current position, Eric's position is in the 30-hour week position, and I would hazard a guess that he spends a heck of a lot more time in that position. This is a 40-hour week salary, so 10 hours additional. You're right. It's a salary position, though, so if anybody's ever worked on a salary, you work until your job's done, and there could be more. Also, just for further information, currently Buckland plays gives town administrator $55,200. Sheldon pays theirs $53,600 some dollars. Each of those positions are for 40 hours, so our estimate is a $60,000 budgeting figure here should amply give us room to hire somebody of a caliber capable.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Further discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor of bringing and appropriating a total of $347,268, transferring $5,000 from the Fred Cross Fund for a total of $352,368 for general government expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's hesitant unanimously. Thank you. I would like to do, we're at one o'clock, I'd like to try to do... I'd like to try to do 12, 13, and 14, and then break. Can't that sound to people? Good? So, Article 12, am I hearing a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Leonard.
I move to town raise and appropriate 42,472 for highway ambulance service assessment, and $1,667 for Highland ambulance service radio assessment, for a total of 44,139 for Highland ambulances.
Are you a second? Number of seconds? Anything to say about this?
Right, Mr. Peter.
I will.
This is our assessment for our cooperative ambulance service that we belong to, the town belongs to, and this is our assessment for that service.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recognizes this.
Thank you. Discussion. Ready to vote? Okay. All of those in favor of raising and appropriating 42,472 for Highland ambulance service, and $1,667 for Highland ambulance service radio assessment, for a total of 44,139, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. This is the article 13, is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, in an effort to be the most popular select board member of the Finance Committee, I move that the town transfer from free cash $3,000 to pay for the reserve account.
Is there a second?
Second.
He's gonna pay one of that.
This appropriation, it's a routine appropriation, but it does move $3,000 into what's known as a reserve account, which the Finance Committee has authority to disperse. Generally, that's upon our request, but to fill in small overdrafts and that sort of thing when we get towards the end of the year.
Thank you. Any recommendations, Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this unanimously.
You do? And how do you feel about Mr. Carter, really? Discussion. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor of transferring from free cash to some of $3,000 from the reserve account, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 14, is your motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Hold it.
I move the town adopt the following bylaw for the town of Asheville pursuant to MGL C40, Section 2113. The collector shall pay all fees received by him/her by virtue of his/her office into the town treasury. And again, all other officers who receive fees by virtue of their office shall report the amount thereof from time to time to the select board, who shall publish them in the annual report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Want to explain this to us, Mr. Carter?
Yeah, basically, we have in our own bylaws, under tax collector, a provision that was adopted on May 3rd, 1986, that says that demands and fees collected by the treasurers, I'm sorry, collected by the tax collector could be retained by the tax collector. This was a way of collecting and receiving demands and fees. And part of the same DLS division of local services under the Department of Revenue recommendation was that a lot of towns who had this sort of minders in the past are moving forward to a different way. And the way that, basically, look at the last five years of demands and fees that were collected by the collector, average them, put it on to the collector's salary, so that you have an equitable sort of exchange. So, it becomes the collector is working for their salary, only not for the demands and fees, and the demands and fees in return go into the treasury. So, it's a pretty simple, straightforward recommendation by the DLS that we are trying to run a more smooth operation.
Thank you.
Finance Committee recommends unanimously in favor of this article, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Discussion.
I meant to say during my little fun there, that number of five years was $5,350, the average number, so that whole bunch of collective salary, I have not...
Free your average. Free your average. And Mr. Mary.
Just to elaborate somewhat further, this is the report that Mr. Coler refers to, and it's something that was studied for us during the fall by the Department of Division of Local Services. They come out and offer technical assistance by auditing the way in which we manage the town financially. So, they have, in this report, very nicely given us 14 different recommendations, and we are starting about the business of trying to implement those one by one as ways of improving the administration and efficiency of our town's government. So, this has been very helpful to us, and we'll probably continue to work on this for the next couple of years if we put one after another of these recommendations. So, we think it does a great deal to help our government improve itself.
At no cost. Thank you. Discussion. Question? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Who's the collector? Who's the collector?
A little bit of history. Directly answer your question. Laura Blaisley is our collector and treasurer, but she went back far enough to realize how it used to be when the tax collector was a collected position on its own with a small site. And so, at that time, if they could keep the demands and any fees, that gave them a reason to really pay attention, you know? When somebody went 31 days past due, if they sent out a demand, then they've got to keep three bucks or five bucks or whatever the main schedule was at that time. But now that we have appointed salary people in those, professional people in those positions, that really doesn't need to happen anymore, or it shouldn't, because we've got a lot of ways to track their performance and that sort of thing. But Laura Blaisley is our municipal collector and town treasurer.
Thank you. Other questions are coming. Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of Article 4, adopting the bylaw related to Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. I'm just gonna exploit you for one more minute, because 16 after 16 is a good place for a break tomorrow. So, Article 16, you're...
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move to town transfer from free cash $3,214 for ambulance capital debt, and $3,010 for ambulance capital building debt, for a total of $6,224 for capital expenditures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you second, Mr. Carter, or Mr. Leonard?
This is the other side of our Highland ambulance agreement, and in cooperative manner, we work with the other town. The ambulance capital is money that each town picks in there ahead of time, knowing that after so many years and so many hours of service, that we have to replace an ambulance. Okay? So, this is putting money in the piggy bank, so we're not all caught unaware. The capital building debt, although the ambulance, Highland ambulance, have yet to build their station, it's well in the works, and we're setting some money aside to pay for that. Last year, we had an assessment, and this will be the next one, but they have been borrowing a facility built on Olson, is very active on the Highland ambulance board to discuss it more, but they've been very fortunate to share space in Goshen at the firehouse, but at some point, Goshen wants their firehouse back, and the ambulance service is demanding more space and has more equipment and so forth, so they're gonna build their own facility, but still centrally located in Goshen.
Thank you. Finance Committee, any recommendations? Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter. The Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion. Ready to vote on Article 16? All those in favor of transferring from free cash, a total of 62,24 for capital expenditures, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You guys are incredible. We had a really good debate. I hope I didn't interrupt you, but I was trying to be, that was a powerful conversation we had this morning about the issues. Thank you. When do we want to come back on line?
Tomorrow, 1:45.
1:45, I hear. Do you find disagree?
What time?
Two. Are there more twos or more 1:45? How many want two?
Two.
How many want 1:45? How many want 1:51? I think it's gonna come down to two. Thank you. I wanna guess.
Are we running?
We are.
Cam on here, nice job.
Did a bang-up job.
Did a bang-up job. Looks like you got it in correctly. Very good.
I pushed the button. I'm waiting to be on YouTube. Thank you. I'll be back at this minute's lunch. Thank you. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Coler. I move that the town raise and appropriate $182,242 and transfer $2,000 from the revolving dog fund for a total of $185,129 for public safety expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Unwait, I've got the mission. We're being recorded, both audibly and visually. Audioically?
Audioically.
Yeah. The two major additions to this budget was with the fire department, the police department, $6,000 on the fire department side, and it was mostly NFPA testing. I believe that stands for National Fire Protection Association. And the testing was on just a few line items, there were several things, but pumps on the big trucks had to be tested, fire hose testing, which is like 30 cents a foot, ladder testing, which has a cost per ladder and per room per ladder, which I was thinking of. And replace a couple of red doors that were failing. On the police side, beside the 2% increase in wages, there was an additional adding of hours, approximately 312 hours a year for extra coverage. That goes to about six hours a week. So, those were the two justifications for those increases. They were presented with larger budgets and did the best we can to find some deal around that.
Thank you, Mr. Coler. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator. Welcome back to London. We strongly recommend this unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion. On the safety, questions, comments? Ready to vote? All right. All those in favor of raising and appropriating 182,229 and transferring $2,900 to the revolving dog fund for a total of 185,129, an almost safely expensive, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Article 18.
Moderator. I move to town raise and appropriate $58,882 for cultural/recreational expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
As you can see in the article, these are the budgets for the library, building memorial park, $2,000 to continue our invasive weed removal from the lake, historical permission and veterans' graders count for that.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, guess what? The Finance Committee recommends this unanimously.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Registered rocks.
What do you have to do on the income for lunch, and where can I get something?
I don't think we drink it, but...
Okay. Anything else? Any questions, comments? In vitamins? No? We ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of $58,822 for cultural and recreational expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. I found that Ash and Tom's wife has yelled. Anybody here in these two blocks with not registered voter or veteran? Thank you. Article 18, am I hearing a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I move to town transfer from free cash $125,339 for sanitation services.
Am I hearing a second?
Second.
And listed, these are the projections on what it's gonna, how it's supposed to run for the most part, the transfer station, our involvement and dues to the Hilltown Resource Management Cooperative. The operation of the transfer station, which earlier this morning I had spoken about that included some monitoring and testing. There's also an engineering study for $19,000 that we're gonna have to do to update and check in on the locations and figure out what our longer range plan is. And it also includes $350 for the inspector of ambulance.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends for this article.
You had to say lunch. Thank you. Discussion.
I have a question.
Please.
The point of curiosity, what do we generate in income out of our fees?
Mr. Mary. Mr. Moderator, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I recall being on the quarter without $82,000, and I think the total cost prior to some of these increased costs is around $87,000. So, it doesn't make money for us, but I think with our income from the fees, we are roughly breaking.
It's purely offset. What comes in purely offsets this?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion about sanitation services? All in favor? Yeah, did you get it? Yeah, Mr. Mary. All in favor of transferring from free cash $135,339 for sanitation services, say aye.
Aye.
Ready to vote? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 20, is your motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move to town transfer from free cash $8,900 and raise and appropriate $1,250 for a total of... Um, the three thousand dollars basically is a placeholder to, we own one-third of that as a town, and we will be responsible for one-third of it, even though they're managing the overall project. Uh, so it's to keep it fresh and on the table. Um, it's going to take a lot more than that, but we're pursuing, we're going to be pursuing some significant municipal and not-for-profit arrangements. Uh, hopefully between the two of those things, we'll get that wall paid for.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one thirty-one for highway road expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Article twenty-two is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town raise and appropriate forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for human services expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to tell us about it?
Sure. Um, we've gone up a bit on winter roads in this year's budget, and we've been trying to do is look at the three-year running average and try to get closer to that number. Uh, so each year, we've been incrementally going up on winter roads to try to get to where we need to be. Uh, praying to do that, we're at special town meeting, uh, this year, you know that winter roads actually came in somewhere north of one hundred and sixty thousand in that range, so, um, this year, above average. We're trying to get closer to that so we don't have to do special thing every year. Um, winter sidewalks, you'll see that we put five thousand dollars in budget again this year for winter sidewalks. Uh, this was a big issue at town meeting last year, and we thought to do it last year, and we heard positive feedback about how things went this past winter with the sidewalks, so hoping to continue that as well. Uh, rest is pretty complete, so I'm assuming this is a question.
I'm sorry, the discussion ended. Get out of here for our final.
Yes, we, we recommend the article twenty-one to be used.
Thank you. Nobody's standing up anymore. We lost it. It's hot. Thank you.
Did the five thousand begin to cover the need given our first whack at this in the challenging year?
Well, amazingly, nothing did.
Finally.
It's, uh, we have six, we set aside five thousand dollars out of grant program incoming. Uh, it was our first year, it was a pilot, we probably started three weeks late, but we got through that and worked through it. There is six hundred and eighty-five dollars of that five thousand dollars left. If it's of interest to you, on Monday night, probably one of the topics we're going to bring up is should we spend that to actually sweep up the mess we made on some of these sidewalks, uh, put it down, sand and something, but, uh, yeah, five thousand dollars worked. It was a pilot project, there was only a limited number, as, as many of you know, of, of the sidewalks that were cleared, but it seemed to work, and I noticed, I'm sure you noticed out of your window, we noticed out of ours, how much traffic and how much it was appreciated.
Other discussion on highway roads. We're here. Oh, Mr. Coler, sorry.
Um, it is worth noting that the select board has set up a special fund for contributions if anyone wants to contribute to that personally.
Not to support the sidewalks, not to support.
That's right. Both of you can walk off. Um, yes, sir, Mr. Riker.
Alan Rice South Street, can you explain the retention wall repair, three thousand dollar line item? Retention wall repair? Where is that?
That's a placeholder. Just two studies, one has been completed, one is at seventy-five percent. Um, Taiwan did an alternatives analysis for the, we're talking about the retention wall behind the old Sanderson, now managed by the, the field trustees, uh, for the field board, it's called now. Um, and they are seventy-five, approximately seventy-five percent of the way through a design with a pick alternative. There were a lot of public meetings at that point. Um, the three thousand dollars basically is a placeholder to, we own one-third of that as a town, and we will be responsible for one-third of it, even though they're managing the overall project. Uh, so it's to keep it fresh and on the table. Um, it's going to take a lot more than that, but we're pursuing, we're going to be pursuing some significant municipal and not-for-profit arrangements. Uh, hopefully between the two of those things, we'll get that wall paid for.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one thirty-one for highway road expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Article twenty-two is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for human services expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please tell us what we need to know.
This forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, is a, a fifty-five hundred dollar increase over the prior year to support the senior center, uh, our local council on aging, uh, that's pretty basic, and veterans' benefits, which, uh, we have to, uh, pay our share in anticipation of some reimbursement. Those of you a month ago that were at a special town meeting, uh, because of some changes in our population in the community, we had appropriated more money in the veterans' benefits than we appropriated last year. Uh, those are all reflected in these numbers.
Thank you. Finance committee, is there recommendations?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends Article twenty-two unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Discussion. Ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for human services expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Article twenty-three is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town raise and appropriate one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars for employee benefit expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
What should you tell us about that?
Well, what you should know is that due to decreases in unemployment trends and workers' comp, this is down five thousand and forty-one dollars from last year.
Thank you. Finance committee, have you a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends to support and recommends this.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Discussion. Police benefits? Ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine ten for employee benefit expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-four, your motion.
Moderator. I move the town raise and appropriate forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for Franklin Regional Council of Governments expenses.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions?
Well, what you should know is that our town, along with many others in Franklin County, belong to, uh, FERC, Franklin County Regional Government, and FERC provides a lot of services for us, the building inspection program, um, the, our town accountant, so we're sharing these expenses with other towns to make it affordable for us. Um, quite frankly, I have absolutely no idea what REPC, one hundred and fifty dollars, means, but it's part of our, our FERC system.
That's a toothbrush we share.
A toothbrush we share here.
Recommend to the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Schrader. The finance committee recommends unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Discussion. FERC. With both? That a thumbs up or a hand?
No, that, that was a, a little jester.
That's convenient, uh, Mr. Riker.
Now, Mr. Moderator, I'm a believer in knowing what we're voting for. The REPC is the Regional Emergency Planning Commission, which costs one hundred and fifty dollars in a year, and I would further note that this year, we're being asked to vote for an amount that is one thousand dollars, one thousand, thirty-nine dollars less than we made this last year.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating forty-nine thousand, nine sixty-three for FERC expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-five is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town raise and appropriate forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for Franklin Regional Council of Governments expenses.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions?
Well, what you should know is that our town, along with many others in Franklin County, belong to, uh, FERC, Franklin County Regional Government, and FERC provides a lot of services for us, the building inspection program, um, the, our town accountant, so we're sharing these expenses with other towns to make it affordable for us. Um, quite frankly, I have absolutely no idea what REPC, one hundred and fifty dollars, means, but it's part of our, our FERC system.
That's a toothbrush we share.
A toothbrush we share here.
Recommend to the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Schrader. The finance committee recommends unanimous.
Thank you. Discussion. FERC. With both? That a thumbs up or a hand?
No, that, that was a, a little jester.
That's convenient, uh, Mr. Riker.
Now, Mr. Moderator, I'm a believer in knowing what we're voting for. The REPC is the Regional Emergency Planning Commission, which costs one hundred and fifty dollars in a year, and I would further note that this year, we're being asked to vote for an amount that is one thousand dollars, one thousand, thirty-nine dollars less than we made this last year.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of raising and appropriating forty-nine thousand, nine sixty-three for FERC expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-five is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town appropriate one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-six from the sewer enterprise fund for sewer expenses, and to meet that appropriation by raising one hundred and thirty thousand, four twenty-six from sewer charges, and transferring ten thousand from retained earnings of the sewer enterprise fund to pay for sewer expenses.
Thank you. Would you like a second?
Second.
May I second you? What should you tell us about that?
Basically, this is a level fund from last year. We sometimes draw more off of our own, um, savings account stabilization fund, up to fifteen and twenty this year, we're only doing ten thousand from our retained earnings because we're trying to build our stabilization fund back. We're down around seven thousand, and we're more comfortable when it's closer to one hundred thousand, so bit by bit, we'll build it back up. Overall, it is level funding, money we're saving from, uh, we did, uh, some improvements, so we're using less fuel, and that has allowed us to do three percent salary raise to our people, Betty Nichols and Prue deserve incredible kudos for running a swell operation and responding to emergencies and keeping the business. It's, uh, well, in fact, almost twenty years, technology's changing, so some of our stuff is obsolete within our electronic alarms and things like this, so that's why we're trying to build the stabilization fund back up, because we anticipate some of that will soon be outdated, and we won't be able to replace parts when we go. That's what's happening.
Thank you. Very useful. Finance committee?
Mr. Moderator. Of course, we recommend Article twenty-five.
Of course.
We have this. We have this.
We're going to talk about. Discussion. Thank you. Sewer expenses. Yes, Mr. Coler?
Just a question. Is the sewer related to the water service in the village? And if so, I was curious because of problems we had with frozen pipes, whether we need to be leveraging something for to address that.
The water district is separate from the sewer. Our only relationship is that the sewer basis is built on the water coming through the water meter, which is a figure to, uh, assess how much is being consumed.
Okay, Mr. Coler. Other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, I'm answering Mr. David's question of what was responsible, and yes, we have, we said that because of the frozen pipes. And we purchased a new water line, pipe machine, which we now have. We ordered it after February third, we just got it last year. It's all set for next year, so.
Good. Thank you. Further discussion. Are we ready to vote? The answer is yes. All those in favor of appropriating one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four twenty-six from the sewer enterprise fund, and to meet that appropriation by raising one hundred and thirty thousand, four twenty-six from sewer charges, and transferring ten thousand from retained earnings from the enterprise fund to pay for sewer expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article twenty-six is your motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler.
I move the town raise and appropriate one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars for debt expenses.
Is there a second? May I second you? Anything you'd like to point out to us?
Yeah, over fiscal year fifteen, um, this represents a decrease of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, we maintain mostly through our finance committee, um, a debt schedule that looks out in the years and looks back, and basically, we retire principal, uh, we retire debt in the form of principal and interest with regard to a fire engine, forty-eight thousand dollars there, we raise it eighty-nine thousand for a total of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, but we picked up some debt associated with the highway dump truck that is sixty-seven thousand dollars, and then it's fifty thousand dollars over the next two years, so that explains that situation.
Thank you. Um, do you have a recommendation to the finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I thought this would be a tempting poll from the floor to see how many of you all think that the finance committee recommends unanimously. Finance committee recommends unanimously. You are right, yes, yes.
I'm not sure of the vote. Should we get the town out here? Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Murray. That is, um, Dr. Murray, if you'd like to add a claim before we order into the discussion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, no, I don't think you're as.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Discussion on our debt expenses. Yes, Mr. Rice.
Yes, I am. Mr. Moderator, I believe that some members of the finance committee are having too much fun right now.
I'll hold them after.
He wants to be the rally.
Show me any attention to that.
Do you have a question, Mr. Fronter? But I have a bookkeeping question. Earlier this morning, there, there was a mention of passing an article that giving permission for the town to borrow short-term monies to cover debt. And why is that money not taken out since it's like a debt? Based on taxes and that sort of thing? Why is that money not taken out of the stabilization fund or the, or the emergency fund to avoid any interest on a short-term debt?
I, I think it's a great question. I just want to make sure that, um, did we authorize the school committee, the school district?
No, town.
Yeah, yeah, true. Good. Mr. Carter.
Good question. If you look back over the last several years, you'll see that we have spent very little, if any, money out of this account. We've done very little short-term, less than twelve-month borrowing. I think that's in direct relationship to how our sta- uh, stabilization account grows. Because we have money set aside in the account, that doesn't mean it's in the proverbial lockbox somewhere, that there's cash in there and it's accounted for what it's for. Uh, but, um, a situation where we may borrow, uh, a significant amount of money would be, uh, after a hurricane, where we're expecting money from FEMA, and we have all these expenses, and we're going to get reimbursed for them later, then we have to go out and get some extra cash to take care of our obligations, and maybe not drain the town so much. As a matter of fact, a lot of those reimbursements are set up that you will borrow to, to, to take care of that, uh, expense. Uh, it's, it's a good time to point out, and we do do it while we're talking about the highway, but, uh, what is it, Tom? Forty-four thousand dollars we got on the winter roads from the state, uh, which we had to expend, uh, by the end of June. and we won't be able to replace parts when we go. That's what's happening.
Thank you. Very useful. Finance committee?
Mr. Moderator. Of course we'd like to hear this, Article 25.
Of course.
Yes, we do.
We're going to talk about discussion. Thank you. Sewer expenses. Yes, Mr. Coler?
Just a question. Is the sewer related to the water service in the village? And if so, I was curious because of problems we had with frozen pipes and whether we need to levy something for to address that.
The water district is separate from the sewer. Our only relationship is that the sewer basis is built on the water coming through the water meter. It's just a figure to assess how much is being consumed.
Okay, it's a good question. Other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, I'm looking to answer David's question. The water must be as responsible, and yes, we had to reset it because of the frozen pipes. And we purchased a new water line by a machine, which we now have. We ordered it after February 2016. We just got it last week. It's all set for next year, so I think that's the best chance we have.
Good. Thank you. Further discussion. Are we ready to vote? The answer is yes. All those in favor of appropriating $140,426 from the sewer enterprise fund, and to meet that appropriation by raising $130,426 from sewer charges, and transferring $10,000 from retained earnings from the enterprise fund to pay for sewer expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 26, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler. I move the town raise and appropriate $152,417 for debt expenses.
Second.
May I ask a question? Anything that might apply after?
Over fiscal year 15, this represents a decrease of $71,230. We maintain mostly through our finance committee a debt schedule that looks out for many years and looks back. And basically, we retired principal, we retired debt in the form of principal and interest with regard to a fire engine, $48,000 there. We raised $89,000 for a total of $137,000. But we picked up some debt associated with the highway dump truck that is $67,000, and then it's $50,000 over the next two years. So that explains that situation.
Thank you. Do you have a recommendation to the finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I thought this would be a tempting poll from the floor to see how many people think that the finance committee recommends unanimously. The finance committee recommends unanimously. You are right. Yes, yes.
I'm not sure of the vote. Should we get the towels up here? Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray. Dr. Murray, I think you'd like to add a complaint before we begin the discussion.
Well, Mr. Moderator, no, I don't think there is.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Discussion on our debt expenses. Yes, Mr. Wright?
Yes, I am. Mr. Moderator, I believe that some members of the finance committee are having too much fun right now.
Article 24. I'll hold them after.
Don't speak, Murray.
Show me your intention to the house.
Do you not want Mr. Stewart on the call? I have a bookkeeping question. Earlier this morning, there was a mention of passing an article that giving permission for the town to borrow short-term monies to cover debt. And why is that money not taken out, since it's like a debt, based on taxes and that sort of thing? Why is that money not taken out of the stabilization fund or the emergencies fund to avoid any interest on a short-term debt?
I think it's a great question. I just want to make sure that, um, did we authorize the school committee, the school district? No, no.
No.
Good. Mr. Wright.
Good question. If you look back over the last several years, you'll see that we have spent very little, if any, money out of this account. Very little short-term, less than a twelve-month bar. I think that's in direct relationship to how our stabilization account grows. Because we have money set aside in account, that doesn't mean it's in the proverbial lockbox somewhere. There's cash in there, and it's accounted for what it's for. But a situation where we may borrow a significant amount of money would be after hurricane, where we're expecting money from FEMA, we have all these expenses, and we're going to get reimbursed for them later. Then we have to go out and get some extra cash to take care of our obligations and maybe not drain the town so much. As a matter of fact, a lot of those reimbursements are set up that you will borrow to, to, to take care of that expense. It's a good time to point out, and we did do a while, we were talking about the highway. But what is it, Tom? $44,000 we got on the winter roads from the state, which we had to expend by the end of June. It was a state, extra state money because of the severe winter. Our portion of that was $44,000. So we're going to spend that money by the last day of June. We have to get our paperwork to them by the last day of July, and they're promising to get us paid by August then. I mean, if those are bigger numbers, those would be situations where you might have to go out and borrow some money. It's probably not going to bother us a whole lot.
Party time for the highway department. Yes, Mr. Murray.
In this debate, we clear everybody, but I would just note that when you put down short-term interest of $7,500, that's simply budgeting, have a provision for the bar, if it doesn't even want to use it. It's somewhat like the reserve fund we gave the finance committee. We don't use that unless at the very end of the year we need to do some math and accounts. So if that never gets used, it goes rolled right back into your free cash account for next year. It's a provision.
You pick it up?
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of raising and appropriating $52,417 for debt expenses, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Murray.
I move the town transfer for free cash $1,000 to pay for repair of town hall steel.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is our second installment of four into our piggy bank to do the proposed town hall steel repairs. We identified them a year or so ago. We put $20,000 in last year, $20,000 this year, $20,000 each year for the next two. And hopefully, that $8,000 will begin to cover the necessary repairs for the town hall steel.
Thank you, sir. Finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends unanimously in favor of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Discussion. Comments, questions?
Quick question. Does this include removal of the defunct antenna that's up there?
A little out.
There's a antenna that's no longer in use. Is that part of...
I'm going to defer questions to Mr. Harris, who's the article.
Is that part of this?
No, that's, that's waiting for someone to remember to take a wrench up when they go for some other...
Oh, okay. That was Stuart Harris, and he resigned his town hall.
In the sequel.
In the sequel. He's got a conviction. Other questions, comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of taking $20,000 for free cash to pay for repair of the town hall steel, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 28, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Moderator, I think the town authorized the following revolving fund account pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to account for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015 as follows. Up to $2,500 for the dog license and control fund, up to $1,500 for the park fund, and up to $2,500 for the library fund.
Second. Is there a second? What can you tell us about it?
This is a routine article to set up, which we have to do annually under Section 53E and a half. So that these revolving funds where fees come in for dog licenses, for park fees, for libraries, fees and so forth, they go into a separate fund, and they can be used by those, for those purposes back out up to a limit that we've stated.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Mr. Moderator. Would you like to unanimously recommend?
Guys have no creativity.
No.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of authorizing the revolving fund and accounts in those amounts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 29, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Coler. I move the town authorized the select board to accept and expend any grants and/or gifts that may become available.
Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Okay. Has anybody else got anything about that?
It's just a regular article. And I would like to say, just as an aside, that these two groups work really well together. It doesn't mean we don't have disagreements, but this process, the budget process, we try to come together on issues. So if it looks like a pushover, it's not at all. It's just that we work very closely together.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coler. Finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Yes, and we recommend it unanimously. Mr. Coler is correct. We hashed it out behind the scenes. That's why we look like, you know, loving relationships.
Nobody has any problem with accepting grants or gifts? All in favor of authorizing the select board to accept and expend any grants or gifts? Any member of that will say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Article 30, is there a motion?
Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Murray.
I move the town authorized the select board to dispose of any unused town-owned equipment or property.
Is there a second? Anything you should tell us about it?
Um, I can imagine if anyone was interested, there would be a 1985 Belgian street sweeper and a hornoskold Ford mower deck. But other than that, I can't think of any other thing I'd like to watch.
We need a street sweeper. The finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee recommends Article 30. We now have to...
All in favor of authorizing the select board to dispose of any unused town-owned construction, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I call that unanimously. Before we break up, a few things. Merciful, Todd, I said we'd be done before 3:12. Right? So, look, I'm lucky enough to have this glory. And to say, I'm the luckiest person in the world to live in this town. I could have heard my name. And this morning, there was a really intelligent child and student-centered discussion that was a model for how towns can work. We still supported the school in its mission. I was very moved. I get the best seat in the house, sitting and watching the Bayland fold. As usual, we're, it's a great town. I count the 33 boards and commissions and councils and associations and communities and districts and trusts, each of which is populated by incredible volunteers who worked tirelessly to make this town a great place to live. I want to thank every single person there. We also have really dedicated employees in our departments and offices who work hard on behalf of them. Wish we could pay them more. But we always have special recognition for those who gave the people at this table, Ron, Stolpe, Thunder. Incredible here. They came, they worked really hard, they came before you, made agreement, even when it disagreed, they kind of were there to, to be unanimous in the recognition. It's easier for us to do all of them. I'd just like to applaud these people. This year, the historical commission, the historical society, and a number of people working on the 250th. Wow. I really want to recognize them. Finally, Sandy Lilly stole my thunder.
I'm sorry.
It's been incredible to work with her. Everyone, you, thank you. It's now 3:42. By your most usual turn. Would you like to ask a question? None to favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous.